Drew, are you ready to go? Eldon?
Ready.
The Planning Commission meeting for this evening, October 6, 2021. My name is Commissioner Hanson. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Commission. We'll start our evening with an invocation by Commissioner Anderson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Bullock.
I'm proud and grateful for many blessings. We're grateful we can be here. It's planning commission meeting tonight. Please help us. We will have good judgment, good temperament, and we'll be able to execute our duties and say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
The nations to the God of the United States of America and into the Republic for which stands one nation in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one on our agenda this evening is the approval of our agenda for October 6, 2021. I'll look for a motion.
This is Sheil. I would propose that we approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll second that.
All right, I've got a first and a second, all in favor. I, any opposed? All right, the commit, the agenda is set for this evening. Item number two A, this is the approval of the minutes from September 15. Commissioners, do you have any changes that need to be noted or any comments? And if there are no changes, I'll look for a motion.
This Commissioner. This Commissioner Musso, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 15.
This Sheil, I second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor. I, any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved for September 15. Item number three, actually, before I get to that, it's my understanding, Kathy, we have a new ca, a new staff member, Sadie, who's taking notes this evening. Is that correct?
She is.
Perfect. So Commissioners, if you could remember when you speak this evening, if you could state your name for Sadie, so she'll know who's speaking, that would be helpful. At this time, we'll go to item number three, the Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Commissioners, do you have any that need to be put on the record? Commissioner, this Commissioner Hanson, I do not.
No.
Anybody? Okay, there are not any here that, not any abstentions at this time. Number four A, this is the final plat. This is consideration and recommendation to the City Council for the Desert Ridge Phase 1A and 1B, located approximately Bella Vista Drive and Desert Cactus Lane. The applicant is Son of Southern Utah Incorporated. Turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Eldon. The applicant is requesting approval of a final plat for the Desert Ridge Phase 1A and 1B subdivision. This is located at approximately Bella Vista Drive and Desert Cactus Lane. This particular subdivision is proposing 49 townhomes on an area covering 6.975 acres. The zoning for this subdivision is planned unit development. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal, and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Desert Ridge Phase 1A and 1B subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as seen in your reports. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments. This is Commissioner Hanson. The only question I have is just if staff could clarify the road improvement that's going to be completed with this. If I'm, I can't remember the street right now. It's on the east side. It's my understanding that will be completed in full with this project. Is that correct? If I remember correctly from when we first saw this.
They have up to 30 homes they can build without it, but that's part of what it's supposed to be. I think it's 30 homes. I'll have to go back, but that would be their best case scenario for them was they could build up to 30, but then that road has to be completely put in.
Okay.
1100 East, by the way, is the name of it.
That's all right. Thanks. Commissioners, any other questions or comments for staff? And if not, I'll look for a motion.
This Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Desert Ridge Phase 1A and 1B, located approximately Bella Vista Drive and Desert Cactus Lane with the two findings and five conditions, and send it to City Council for consideration.
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Anderson. I have a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting, Commissioner Musso.
I.
Commissioner Sheil. I, Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number four A passes unanimously. We'll move to item number, excuse me, four B. This is also a final plat. It's consideration and recommendation to the City Council for Brio Phase 6A, located approximately Via Del Sol and Washington Parkway. The applicant is Coal West Homes. Turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioner. The applicant is requesting approval of a final plat for the Brio Phase 6A subdivision, which is located at approximately Via Del Sol and Camino Borde. This particular subdivision is proposing 18 lots on an area covering 6.135 acres. The specific location of this subdivision is zoned planned community development. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal, and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Brio Phase 6A subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as seen in your packet. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
So Eldon, I have one question. So Via Del, excuse me?
Name.
Oh, excuse me, this is Brian Musso. So Via Del Sol, as it goes north there, it runs into the property owned by the LDS Church. What is planned with that parcel? Do they have to have a turnaround there, or are they going to? I mean, it just dead ends, right?
It, it does, yeah, it just stubs in.
So is that, is that acceptable that it just dies right there? Or is there, do they have plans with the, with the property owner to develop that too?
Yeah, I, I haven't, we haven't seen anything from, from the church.
I'll just pipe in a little bit. Church is going to be building there fairly soon, from what we've been told.
So is it going to be a, a building, a chapel?
A church house, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. This is going to be a brand new one that they, they were going to build more east, but this property came available, and they're, they're going to retain the one down east. But this will be a priority lot here within the next year.
So that'll just die into that?
It'll go right into the church property.
Okay.
That's why we had them, we knew that was coming. The church asked us, and we, and, and Coal West was good about making it. There used to be a cul-de-sac there, and they had lots, but the church asked, and for us and for circulation and everything, you know, everybody came together, the church, Coal West, and, and the city.
So there'll be another access to that property from?
From, there'll be one, yeah, that will go out on to.
On the other side. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? If not, I'll look for a motion on item number four B.
This is Sheil. I'd, I would propose that we approve the final plat for Brio Phase 6A subdivision located approximately Via Del Sol and Camino Borde for 18 lots on about 6.135 acres. And ask this to City Council for their approval. It's with, with the three findings and five conditions.
This Commissioner Anderson, I second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Sheil. I've got a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Musso.
I.
Sheil. I, Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Four B passes unanimously as well. We'll send that to City Council with our recommendation for approval. Item number five A. This is consideration to approve a conceptual design for a two-lot subdivision located approximately 3650 South Washington Fields Road. The applicant is Neil Walter. Staff, I'll turn the time over to you for your report.
Thank you. The applicant has requested approval of the conceptual snow minor subdivision, as spelled out, and the applicant is wishing to split the present 36.74 acre parcel into two lots. Lot one of the subdivision will be 27.38 acres, and lot two of the subdivision will be 9.36 acres. Lot two recently received a zone change to planned unit development commercial. Thus, the request to separate from the non-commercial zoned acreage is why they're doing this tonight. The proposed minor subdivision is currently zoned ag 20 acre minimum, and the planned unit developed commercial is again on, on that lot, number two. Both parcels meet the minimum lot size of the respective zones, therefore, staff has reviewed the request and has no problem with the proposed conceptual snow minor subdivision plan conforms to the standards set forth in the zoning regulations and the subdivision ordinance. Staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission approve the conceptual design of the snow minor subdivision based on the findings and subject to the conditions in your report. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have on this two-lot subdivision.
All right, Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions. This is Commissioner Hanson. I had a question. On the far corner of the northeast portion over there, it doesn't appear to be wide enough, but is that planned to be an entrance of some sort? Or will that be closed off?
We're not sure yet, but it would be a shared, so they'd only have to do half.
Okay.
And so that's why, you know, I could try to zoom in on that particular measurement, but being six, it's more than enough for a half a roadway, so.
Okay.
But again, that could come through the parcel lot too, just as easy and been through, so we're not too concerned. We're just not sure where the, depending on what development will happen north of it, will dictate kind of if there's going to be a shared road or no road at all.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions on this particular item, five A?
So this is Commissioner Musso. So the 50-foot-wide canal easement that runs north-south through almost the entire property then, that'll be essentially non-buildable? Because it's going to have to be an easement or?
Essentially, yeah, I would, I would say, yeah. I mean, I'm not making, that's because the canal easement's there. They, you can't put a building on it, a wall. They don't like walls on them, but if it was on the far edge of the 50-foot, they would be okay probably with that, because they couldn't really stop it from being on the, you know, either to the east or the west boundary line. But yeah, no building will be on that, because the canal line runs underneath, under the ground right there.
Could put a bridge over it if, on that far edge, they wanted to access that.
Yeah, you could put a road over it, you know, but again, no, no buildings, because again, they can cut through the asphalt, get in, fix the pipe, put the asphalt back if it was, a road was there. But again, we probably, I don't see a roadway going to there. I was just bringing it out in case they needed to put one in. There's enough room for your question. But any road, it would be a shared one on that north boundary line if one does come in.
And for clarity on that easement, that, that is not an easement held by Washington City. That's held by the Washington and St. George Canal Company. Washington City would like to install a trail across that potentially, depending on how the trail system develops in that part of the city. But that is an easement held by a different entity that we require that the subdivision recognize and, and essentially make, make, make notice of record on their, on their plat.
Yeah. Drew, didn't this come before us already for?
For zoning? You had general plan amendment on that, the piece. Lot one was for general plan amendment. Lot two, in this case, got the zoning for the PUD commercial.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, that's why it looks familiar to you because of that. So this, since the zoning was approved, the family and the applicant wants to get this piece broke, broke off, because it's all under one, so they can start moving forward on that commercial planned unit development piece.
I saw, I believe, Mr. Walters stand as if he wanted to say something. Is there something you'd like to add this evening?
I was also just going to note, for the Planning Commission's benefit, that there's a substantial elevation change right along that line. And so part of the conversation was, well, where should the line be with regard to the easement? We chose to put the line further to the west, because that's where the substantial elevation change is naturally on the property. It also makes it easy to just work with that easement. I'll also just note that the, this has come before the Planning Commission, and the comment is correct. We're just trying to separate the commercial from the residential so that at a later point, there can be a plat that can be brought in to discuss the plans for development of the commercial and the residential separately. We think that that's a much better approach to handling both pieces of, both sections of this parcel. So, and I'm available to answer any other questions that you have.
So, okay, this is Commissioner Musso. So I was under the impression that the whole parcel was going to go commercial. It's not just?
The only portion is what's referenced as lot two.
Yes, so that was what was approved by, was recommended by this, this body, and then approved by the City Council. The original application was for a C2, but the actual approval was a planned development commercial.
So isn't this, wasn't it, I thought that whole corner right there basically was, isn't it all master planned commercial, Drew?
Just lot two. In fact, yeah.
Go ahead, Neil, you're right.
Yeah, just lot two is the portion that is, that was general plan commercial. And so when we came and asked for the zoning, we were asking for zoning that was consistent with the general plan for that piece. We were asking for more density on lot one, and there was a, the, it ended up being, the actual general plan amendment on lot one ended up being, most of it remained, 19 acres remained very low density, and then nine acres ended up being low density. So this will, all of lot one will end up remaining low density and very low density, and lot two will be planned development commercial.
This is Commissioner Hanson. Do you have a timeline of which will be developed first, lot one or two? Are they consistent at the same time?
I think it'll just depend on the commercial interest, and then the, just how the residential markets continue to move. Obviously, both markets, there's demand in today. And so I think one of the earlier questions that was asked about access, I, I think that just, that's going to end up really a preliminary plat discussion that I think is going to be a valuable one for the Planning Commission to participate in. But we're not prepared to present a preliminary plat for, for example, lot one or some kind of a subdivision for lot two. What we're trying to do is get those two pieces separated, and then allow, allow them to move forward at their own speed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioners, any other questions for our staff today on this particular item? I'll look for a motion on item five A.
Does this go to the City Council?
No, this is, since it's a two-lot, it's just conceptual, so you're just making a recommendation to approve the conceptual design. And then staff takes care of the paperwork to get it sent to the county.
So this is Sheil. I'd make a motion that we give a consensual approval for the snow minor subdivision located approximately the northwest corner of 3650 South and Washington Fields Road. The applicant's wishing to split the present 36.74 acres into two lots. Lot one of the subdivision will be 27.38, and lot two of the subdivision will be 9.36. Lot two recently received a zone change to PU D-C. The request is to separate from the other non-commercial zone. So lot one is A-20, and lot two will be PU D-C with the two findings and four conditions.
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
Okay, I've got a, first initial motion by Commissioner Sheil. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting, Commissioner Musso.
I.
Sheil.
I.
Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number five A is approved for the conceptual design.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Item number six A we'll move to as a preliminary plat. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for the Red Mesa at Sunrise Valley Phase 3 preliminary plat, located approximately 300 South Country Way. The applicant is Mid and LLC. I'll turn the time over to staff for the report.
Thank you, Commissioner. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Red Mesa at Sunrise Valley Phase 3 subdivision, located at approximately 300 South Country Way. This particular subdivision is proposing 28 patio home sites on an area covering 7.91 acres. The zoning designation at this location is planned unit development, and the surrounding zoning is planned unit development to the northeast along with open space to the south and west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Red Mesa at Sunrise Valley Phase 3 subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as seen in your report. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks, Eldon Commissioners. I'll open the floor for any questions for staff.
This is just an extension of what's already happened in the earlier phases, right?
Yes, in this particular area, they're just matching up. That's what that, those properties you kind of see that are on the right there that aren't fully, that's just, that's a different phase. It was phase, I think, four of the overall development out there. And this, they just decided, because they only had so many homes left to meet their maximum, so they just did the same product. And so it is an extension of that, that particular phase of number four.
Awesome, thank you.
Hey Drew, of, with this, with this PUD, sorry, this is Commissioner Anderson. We're quite a ways into this now. How, how, how? And maybe it says on there, probably does. How much of their allotted units are they getting to now? Do we know?
This is it. This is, so everything will be preliminary platted now out there in, you know, in all of that area.
Pretty much.
This is it now. Buildout, they're not, of course, there yet. Finals, they're still going to be coming and trickling through, but this is the last preliminary plat in scenic sunrise. And all that 530, see if you're 532 or 534 was the max. This is it. So now you'll just see final plats and, and buildout in that. And they're moving pretty good out there. It's going well for them, it seems like, so.
Have we gotten calls from the folks on Country Way? As the development has started to grow, we've seen an increased number of calls.
Not that I'm worried, but then again, my office won't get a lot of those, but I think most people were thrilled when the road went in. That helped out tremendously with dust and, and speed and everything else, you know, because there's stop signs, there's a few other things that have taken place. So I think everything that we could do to help that is, has helped.
Sorry, Sadie, that was Commissioner Hanson.
Quit telling everybody else to get their name, and then.
I know, I blew it. We're going to keep score. I'm down one. This is a public hearing, so I will, this time, open this up for anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak on this particular item. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name for the record, for Sadie. It does not appear that anybody here would like to make a comment. At this time, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Musso, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Sheil, second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed at this time. I'll open a backup for Commissioners. Any additional comments or questions for staff? If there are no additional, let's look for, I look for a motion on this item.
This Commissioner Musso, I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for Red Mesa at Sunrise Valley Phase 3 subdivision located approximately 300 South Country Way, and that this move on to the City Council for their approval with the two findings and 12 conditions as stated in the report. This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
I've got a first by Commissioner Musso. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting, Commissioner Musso.
I.
Sheil.
I.
Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number six A passes unanimously. We'll send that to City Council with our recommendation for approval. Item number six B, moving along, is also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for the, for the rise at Coral Canyon. It's a preliminary plat, it's located approximately 1600 North Telegraph Street. The applicant is Coal West Home. And I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Eldon. The applicant is proposing 130 townhomes on an area covering 19.851 acres. The zoning designation at this particular location is planned community development. Surrounding zoning is planned community development to the northeast, south, and west. The townhomes will range in size from 1600 square feet to 1850 square feet. All of the townhomes will have a two-car garage with the driveways ranging from 16 feet wide to 18 feet and 20 feet long. The majority of the units will be two-story, incorporating three different elevation designs to increase the curb appeal within the development. And the remaining 13 units will be single level and are found on the corner lots. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot-wide trail that will be located between the development and Telegraph Street. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the rise at Coral Canyon subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks, Eldon Commissioners. I'll open the floor for questions or comments for our staff. This Commissioner Hanson, I had a, I guess it's kind of a general question. I drove through a community that's like this. I believe it was in St. George, but nonetheless, it was a community like this, and all of their trashcans were out in front of their garages. It wasn't trash day. And I'm just wondering, in a community like this, does our city make it a requirement that those trashcans are inside? Or is that an HOA thing? HOA thing? Thanks. Terrible. Commissioners, while you're thinking of additional questions, uh, this is a public hearing. This time I'm going to open up the public hearing. Uh, we did receive one comment on this. I don't have the name in front of me, but we there we go. Yeah, Elon, we had, we, uh, we received your comment on this. We're able to review that prior to the meeting. Anybody here in the chambers, if they would like to make a comment on this particular item, please come forward. And, uh, state your name for the record. Sadie will appreciate it. And whoever wants to go first. All right. At this time, it looks like there are no comments from here in the chamber. I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Sheil, I propose we close this public hearing.
Mr. Anderson, I second.
I've got a first and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, I'll open the floor back up to any questions you have or comments for staff.
This is, this is Commissioner Bullock. It said the trail system. Are they showing it on here? Am I missing it somewhere?
It's hard to see. It is labeled there between the road and, uh, Telegraph. Uh, I think it may be on the, uh, cross street section detail. Yes, there we go.
Okay, so Eldon, I may be a little dense and that's, you know, no doubt about that I am. But where it says Ridgeway, it's a public, public fifty foot public road. Both of them are fifty foot public roads. But then there's a, a dimension line that only shows twenty six feet between. What is that? Was the twenty six is in between curb to curb or I don't get it. Why does it say fifty foot public road? But then there's a dimension line on there. It says twenty six.
Yeah, that, that's a technical question that I don't necessarily have the answer to on that.
Could you, um, Drew, do you see where I'm talking about? Go down to the next slide. That one right there. Go, go in. So move over towards the plats so you can see the developments and see where it says twenty six. Blow it up.
Any particular device you want me to blow in on?
I'm just using my iPad like.
Dynamite nitro glycerin. That's as tight as I can go in on it. Um, we'll go back and verify now. Again, always remember that PCDs can get their own street cross sections approved. Okay, within their developments that are dead, made differ from the city's standard cross sections. We'll go and make sure. That's all that they can build. Like they wouldn't be able to come in. Hopefully this one. You know, falls within one of those approved cross sections. Um, cause that's the only way you can bring it in. It's either a city already designed one, like, you know, our standard ones or whatever's approved. So what we can just verify, you can see there's planter strips in there. It looks like as well. That's what those one boxes are. You know, that you can see, see where that twenty six is right there. And then you have that rectangle.
Right.
And that's probably a planter strip area. But we'll, we'll verify for sure with the approved cross sections of Coral Canyon.
It's shown it in section C. To your side. There's a section cut on there. Sorry, this is Commissioner Bullock. There's a section cut right to the left, right over and down right there. Section C. So you got twenty six feet of asphalt. And then.
And it's a planter strip, the PS. So, so so what's the fifty foot right away then? Is that just for the, for the sidewalks and everything else?
It includes, yeah, from the, from the back of the public right away to the back of the public.
You can see on that diagram right there, the whole fifty foot.
Yeah.
Calls out asphalt, curb gutter, planter strip, sidewalk. And then the foot that we always have on the backside of sidewalks. So it's probably, you know, we'll just make sure that is one of the approved cross sections. Just verify. I'm sure that it is.
So people will be able to park in front of those planter boxes? And I'm assuming if they go to visit somebody, was that how it's designed?
Well, I'm just trying to think.
You know, it's like, it looks like they'd be blocking a lot of the driveways if they did that.
Yeah, it'd be those longer planter strips. You can see, you know, you, you know, the one again by that. If I'm looking where it says that phase one and that twenty six right below it. That planter strip right there. Yeah, you probably could have a car parallel park with that. Uh, but I'm trying to think on twenty six feet of asphalt, you know, what you you know, tendency of twelve, you probably wouldn't have parking on there because lanes of traffic are generally twelve feet wide. If I go twelve and twelve. You know, but again, I, I have two foot, but, but it really won't matter. Again, we'll go verify. They can only put in what's approved in a cross section. Regardless of any question that we have, if it's an approved cross section. You know, by in the PCD, then it meets what's been approved.
That twenty six foot cross section is approved in the PCD.
Okay.
So that.
So is that, is that fairly standard for a PCD then? Twenty six foot? I mean, I'll ask, yeah, I'm gonna refer to Corey. I'm sorry.
PCD, it depends what they get. It's not the same as the city standard.
Your mic on.
Sorry, I just said with a PCD, it depends how, what, how they design it and so forth. Whereas non-PCD would be the city standard.
And I understand all that. I guess my question is, is it wide enough? In case people decide to come to visit.
And so the answer to that is yes, this is not an unusually small width for this nature of residential use that if the city said just build a city road, it would be twenty six feet of asphalt to that area as well. It may not have the planter boxes or some of the amenity on the sides that we've got. But yeah, there's nothing unusually small about this.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Commissioners, this is Matt from the fire department. On your street issue, when you talk about twenty six feet, the, uh, the fire code doesn't allow any street parking. So it sets the, the, uh, the width of the street. So twenty six to thirty two feet, they can have one side of the street to park on. They gotta be over thirty two feet to have street parking. That's where you get to some public and private because if it's a public road, it has to be wide enough to park on. So a lot of times they'll go to that private to narrow that down, but they can do that and meet the code, but they would have to close all street parking.
So at this point, then there will be no on-street parking.
So yeah, the fire code wouldn't allow it, uh, with the width that, uh, that they have shown there.
With that being said, this is Commissioner Hanson. I'm wondering if we need to have a parking, additional parking added to the north end of the project where there doesn't seem to be any. The kind of the red areas, the parking is if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Visitor parking.
Visitor parking, yeah.
No, I, I, I mean, as I'm listening through all this, I'd be more, you know, when I read, listened to Eldon's report and said some driveways will be sixteen feet and some will be bigger. If my recommendation, I just wouldn't worry so much about your red boxes as saying that all driveways need to be a minimum of eighteen feet. For two, two cars to be parked on the driveway is what I'd recommend instead of trying to make extra parking. Somewhere that allows, then you have two, you have a two car garage and a two car driveway sufficient for four, four vehicles. That, that pretty much will help handle a lot of of those concerns. So that's what I, that's just my two cents for you is just to say that all driveways would be a minimum of eighteen feet instead of trying to add more visitor parking stalls.
You mean two vehicles and, and junk?
Well.
That's usually what townhomes.
It, 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 well, townhomes are not. I can take you to any subdivision in this city and it's, everybody parks outside. Um, or else they have a three or four car garage and then half of it's filled with junk. So um, that's just the nature of human beings.
It's a three car, one car like I have.
That's right.
Yep.
This is Commissioner Anderson. Yes, I mean, I I've built a lot of townhomes and I would definitely say eighteen foot width on your driveways is really helps. Um, twenty foot long. I do think though, even with all that, for some reason, people always seem to find a way to max out the visitor parking. And that usually is a huge complaint on almost every project I've ever seen. So I'd say if there is room. I don't think we necessarily have to require it, but I would recommend maxing out any possible visitor parking you can, just to make residents a lot happier. I've never seen too much visitor parking in a townhome community.
On that note, this is, uh, Commissioner Tupoe. I'm wondering if that is sufficient parking over by the clubhouse. Because it's on one side of this project. And I'm thinking everyone from the other side of the project is probably gonna drive and park over there to go to the clubhouse.
Well, you've got both those parking stalls right across, you know, I mean, you know, right over here on this side of the street and that one too, I get.
This is Commissioner Anderson. If, I guess if we're talking about places you could put parking. If you move that, the building to the left of the clubhouse there. The, Drew, if you slide to the left of the, uh, of the whole pool area, I guess.
Yeah, that, there's some, I'm kind of hovering around.
No, to the, the, the townhome section to the left, your other left. There you go. That one. If that slides up towards the other building, you could, you could have visitor parking on, along. You know, most of that road, there are quite a bit of it, at least. Add a few more stalls. Just an idea. Yeah, I'm just saying if you slid it up and that whole thing along there, it could be visitor parking. Plus you could slide this one over a little bit and add a stall or two. Cause that is a good point. I mean, you're gonna have most of your visitor parking concentrated there and all the other visitor parking is gonna be filled up with people's extra car that they somehow have.
I, this is Commissioner Hanson. I'd still like to see some parking up to the north part of this project, cause I feel like there needs to be something up there, maybe in that, that, uh, section that's, uh, it's all white on our. Yeah, right. That's like the tip of the spaceship or the space shuttle. Yeah, that one, right there. Yeah. Yeah, wow. All right, where are we on this? We're on the comment section with, uh, with staff, correct? We've opened and closed the public hearing. Is that right, Sadie? Could you confirm that?
This, this is Shield. That we did have one comment, uh, that, uh, Commissioner Hanson uh, alluded to from Ian Shannon. Specifically was the impact on Telegraph Road. He was wondering about additional development plans with the homes, if it's gonna require some additional signals on Televo, Telegraph Road. I don't know that we, we can answer that really. I mean, it Telegraph is, is a five lane highway. That's made for traffic. And I don't know if it's UDOT or who it is, but.
It's ours.
Uh, I think that's to be determined as development goes across the street for a, for a signal. Isn't that correct?
It is. And if you read your conditions, the first, I think it's either one or two talks about a traffic study will be given at construction drawing times. And that's when that'll be worked out.
Then he, he also commented on water pressure. I think we've always, we've had a, a pretty good lesson on water. And I, I think we're, we're pretty much covered on water.
Well, again, they have to turn in, every subdivision requires a sewer model and a water model. And it has to be, you know, by the engineer with the data for it. So again, those are all part of construction drawing. You know, items.
So I just wanted to bring those up.
Commissioner Hanson, the public hearing was open and closed.
All right, thanks Kathy. Okay, Commissioners, where are we at on this? Is there? How do we fill out parking? That seems to be the biggest issue right now. A couple of options is parking down by the clubhouse as an increase. And then some parking toward the, the north tip of this somehow, some way. Is that something we feel we need to absolutely have? Is it something that, where do you feel? Where are you at on it?
Commissioners, there may be some room on the east end of the space shuttle. As Commissioner Hanson called it there along Kylie Way. You'll see that there's a little space there that might, might provide some opportunity.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I, I would recommend eighteen foot driveway minimum width. Um, plus additional parking at the clubhouse, which you could get if you sold that building up. And I would do additional guest parking up at the top of our spaceship area that we're calling it, I guess. I think all three of those would be important.
I like it. I'll entertain a motion on item six B. So, oh, sorry.
This Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the rise at Coral Canyon. Located at approximately thirty nine hundred east Telegraph. With the two findings. And twelve standard conditions, plus add a thirteen uh, condition to that all driveways be a minimum of eighteen feet wide and twenty feet long. And a fourteenth condition that additional guest parking be added. At the clubhouse area. And a fifteenth condition that additional guest parking be added at the north, uh, section of of the project. The northeast section of the project. And recommend that we've, we pass it on to city council for consideration.
This Sheil, I'd second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson and I have a second by Commissioner Sheil, individual voting Commissioner Musso. Sheil.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Bullock.
Hi.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number six B, uh, passes unanimously. We'll send that to city council with a consideration for recommendation for approval. Moving along to item number six C, this is also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the city council for the Sunrise Valley Industrial Park. It's a preliminary plat and it's located approximately a hundred north country way. The applicant is mid and LLC. I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioner. This proposal was approved back on November thirteenth of two thousand nineteen and has since expired. The applicant is ready to move forward with the project at this time. Other than a name change, there have been no changes from the previously approved preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Sunrise Valley Industrial Park subdivision. This particular subdivision is proposing forty two lots on an area covering sixty six point six nine acres. Zoning designation at this location is zoned heavy industrial. The surrounding zoning is heavy industrial to the north, open space to the east. Unincorporated county property to the south and open space to the west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Sunrise Valley Industrial Park subdivision to the city council. Based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. I do want to point out that, uh, this previously did go through the Hillside Committee. And they added a chain link fence along lots forty two through thirty eight, kind of on the east side there. Which the applicant has abided by and incorporated that onto the lot as well. We're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So Eldon, this is Commissioner Musso. Between lot one, so, so basically from the far corner of the property. We have Country Way. And I understand that the applicant will be responsible for all that distance from their, you know, their lot line going north. And then you have Plum Holdings that goes to the south there. So that little piece that goes over where it says US government. Who does that? Who's responsible for that little bitty section of road? Or are we gonna have a nice paved road? Then it's gonna be dirt and chuckled and then we're gonna have a nice paved road again?
It's all going through, don't.
I'm just asking, is that, is that part of these guys or is that?
It's between them and probably us. But you're not gonna have a gap of a weird piece. You're not, you're not gonna have.
Yeah. Cause you know, the government's not gonna put it in. You know? Okay. Is that part of the infrastructure bill? Okay, all right. Okay. They're doing everything else.
Only five trillion.
This is a public hearing, yes. So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up this item for public comment. Anybody here in the chamber that'd like to speak to this item, please come forward, state your name for the record. And does not look like there is anybody here that would like to speak to this item, nor did we receive any items of public comment as well. So I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Shield, I'd second.
I've got a first and a second all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Any additional questions or comments for staff?
So. Are we gonna have a road that comes off of? Eventually that comes over the. Off of seven, exit ten, I think that is, or whatever it is, and then up through this area eventually. Is that in the master plan by any chance? Where it would cross the river?
From Telegraph?
From, no, from exit, um, SR seven. You're talking from the interchange with the.
There's gonna be a new road that comes right off of that where the, that's called the Long Valley.
Yeah, Long.
Exit, yes. Right there, the county, city of Hurricane are working together, get a new bridge that'll go across and head right over to the. I think it's supposed to go all the way into the fairgrounds, actually from there, that's the plan right now.
Is it? Do we think it'll go through this subdivision or no?
Not through the subdivision, no, that road in the subdivision will tie into it eventually, tee into it somewhere along.
That's what I was wondering, I was just curious so that we didn't have these roads too narrow. As that would be a major artery, I'm assuming that would come through there. And my other concern. On this is, I know there are sixty-six foot public roads and it gives us twenty-six feet of asphalt. On each one, so forty, whatever it was. But. Where these are public streets and this is a heavy commercial, they're gonna have semis parked on both sides of these roads. And it's gonna be like going through Sand Hill, up Sand Hill Drive, and it's tight, you can't get. You can't get two trucks to pass each other going up, but that's my only concern is the road is. I know it looks wide, but once they start parking semi trucks on the sides.
Well, they probably better not, I don't think if you're allowed to park a semi truck on a public street, period.
Uh, they do it on, on Sand Hill Drive, they're parked on, I mean, they might only park for a few hours, but they're still parked and we can't.
That's why, that's why our minimum street width and industrial, you know, residential's fifty foot, industrial sixty-six feet. That's why we bumped them up there because of trucks, you know, turning corners, bringing stuff in, products, deliveries. As long as it's deliveries, people can live with, you know, one, one on one side of the street at a given time, so.
Can they put it in CCNRs to not have any parking on, on the street?
Well, if someone's delivering, we can't do that, our, our standards already.
But employees, they're doing it on, on Sand Hill.
Well, I know, but not semi trucks, they're not.
Right.
So. Yeah. And the problem is, is that you have public streets, we've always said it's, it's hard to go in and write things up on a public street. You know, even though there's places, we tell people they shouldn't be parking, every business that goes in. We make them have, based on the square footage of their building, et cetera, they have to put so many stalls in. You know, they're, they're part of their, their building permit requirements, things like that. But again, I know what you're talking about, I have the same issue with some of those businesses. And I've gone and talked to many of the owners, said, please help out and tell your people not, just because it's convenient, don't park out on here. You know, and then it gets cleaned up for a while and then it, people get lazy again and don't, so.
We need this product real bad, we need it. But, uh. We, I just am concerned about it being jam packed like Sand Hill, so.
I can just interject and make a comment, my name's Rick Meyer with Bush and Gudel. And, um, these are pretty narrow, I mean, for, for the type of product they are. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of space to be parking on the street anyway. Especially if you have, you know, there's gonna be a lot of entrances along there and everything and I. I mean, it's possibility, but, uh, I, I just don't see it being a, a real big problem, but.
Easy to say.
Alright Commissioners, any other comments or questions for the applicant or staff? And if there are not, I'll look for a motion.
This is Commissioner Anderson, so I just, I've just been reading the minutes of when this was originally approved. I'm just curious what the answers to some of these questions that they raised were back then. It looks like there's a, there was a question about where there's access right at the bend, and you said you had an issue with that, Drew, in the minutes.
Yeah, which bend? Oh.
Right here, looks like.
There.
Ellison had an issue with that and, and a few other counselor, councilman did, and then you said you had had an issue, but. I don't see whether there was ever a resolution to it.
You're talking lots thirty-seven and eight?
Yeah, if you scroll down, there's a easement that, that provides access to those upper lots. It's a shared access, you can see the inlet, the in, the easement just wasn't provided on that specific sheet. I think it's the very last page.
Yeah, there you go, if you look at this dotted line, this is what that ended up being, where they didn't pull straight in, but you see. Off of lot.
Yes, I guess, this is, this is what the minutes say that you had said about us, I'm just curious what the answer this was. It just says, Director Allerman noted, the design does not meet the access plan, access management plan. The access on the bend is not as concerning as it is bending to the inside rather than the outside. I'm just wondering, did that get resolved?
Well, that's what this dotted line ended up being, they come in off of that shared driveway. And those, you know, dash lines are an ingress, egress easement. To get to lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Also, I'll, I'll just point out as well, it's Rick, Rick Meyer again, the access used to come off of the common line between thirty-six and thirty-seven. And it was really close to that bend, and I think that's where a lot.
Yeah, that's what this was referring to, so.
So we moved that down one more lot, and so, you know, to take care of that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I'll look for a, a motion on item number six C.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Sunrise Valley Industrial Park subdivision, subdivision located approximately. One hundred North Country Way. With the two findings. And twelve conditions, and send this on to city council.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bullock, I was second by Commissioner Anderson, individual voting Musso.
I.
Shield.
I.
Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
Hanson, I'm an I as well. Item passes unanimously, and we will send that to city council with recommendation for approval. Moving to item number seven A. This is a conditional use permit, it's a public hearing as well to consider approval. Of a conditional use permit, C dash twenty-one dash ten for a car wash located approximately fourteen seventy-five East Telegraph Street. The applicant is MRW Design Associates Incorporated, and I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
If you don't, you may run out of the building, you'll get free vacuums, put it on the screen just in case, that's. Sorry, I couldn't help that. Applicants request an approval of a conditional use permit for this commercial development. Any proposed projects that are proposed along Telegraph or Washington Parkway require a conditional use permit if their. Commercial developments are stated. The applicant's wishing to develop a new drive-through car wash business with associated buildings on this PCD zone property. The area is part of the CNA Hills Plan Community Development Master Plan, with this particular property being designated as commercial use. The proposed dyno dash car wash with associated buildings. For present use and the footprint showing to future commercial sites, I'll get to that, you know, actually, we'll go to that right now. As I get to my report. So kinda help you follow along a little better on that. And there's those two future buildings with, again, the car wash there and where you come in off of, off of Washington Parkway. The proposed car wash will, will be an automated wash system, provide an area for vacuums as well. The parcel appears to be well landscaped and should make for a positive asset to one of the gateways to Washington City. The new building will be required to meet the standards as outlined in the city adopted building and fire codes. Staff feels that if those can be met, then the re, request should be granted for the proposed new commercial development, this location. Also to note that if those two future buildings don't have any approved design, look to them, they'll have to come back at the time when they know what those are gonna be. And just to get. Well, the one is, is, uh, oh, there is a third one up there, I thought it was part of the entrance, but good catch, Commissioner, I appreciate that. But those future buildings will just have to come back and get design approval, um, and make sure the parking's sufficient, but. Um, but today they do know what they're doing with, of course, the car wash itself, the vacuum parking area, entrance, exiting, et cetera. And so we'll kinda scroll through and get some of those.
How big is that piece of property?
It's that big right there.
Okay.
Um, I, did I not put the acreage on there? I apologize if I didn't, but we'll, we'll find that here in a second. There, it just came to me, two point eight acres, you know. This just kinda gives you some of the detention areas, et cetera, I'm sure you've scrolled through all these and, uh. LID requirements, et cetera, and just topographies and everything that would kind of be required for that. So I appreciate the detail that they've put on this, this layout. Here's kind of a layout again of the landscape, which is a big thing, is the commissioners look at elevations, landscaping, you know, circulation flow. So, um, staff's very comfortable, you know, with this proposal and, and again, we can go back and pull up. Just what you can see with the car wash, I think if you've been over on, by the one by the Maverick, they're on, what road is that? We never know what it's called.
Riverside Drive.
Riverside Drive, um, I think that's where these pictures are from, so. So we'll just kinda scroll through there and you can see, but again, you, they have a few of them in the area, um, quite nice looking buildings and. So with that, before I get into far, I need to give you my recommendation, right? Commissioners, staff recommends the planning commission approve, again, this is not a, a move on to city council, this is yours. So staff recommend that you approve C dash twenty-one dash ten. Allowing for the new car wash commercial automated system to be built at that northwest corner of Telegraph Road, Washington Parkway. And it's based on the findings, subject to the conditions. Um, one of the main conditions, gee, I won't read through all of them, but the biggest thing that we find right now because of water. Is that this will be required to have a circulate, a water circulation system. So that we don't have, you know, they can reuse a lot of the water that goes through their system and they run through the filtering. And it'll help keep the water use down on that, so. Let's just move through, so there's your, your elevation sign. Et cetera. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commission has on this proposed conditional use permit. For the dyno dash development.
Alright Commissioners, I'll open up the floor for any questions that you have for Drew or the staff.
This is Shield, the only, uh, question I have, uh, the two point eight should work. I think, I think it's pretty crowded for three operators in there with drive-throughs. Uh, and the stacking plans, I don't, I don't, it all depends on, on who the operator is for that particular. Uh, drive-through and, and what they're gonna require, that the nine hundred feet's gonna be a drink shop or a coffee shop. Uh, the other two could be operators of food and. It could get really, really tight with, with their stacking.
That's why I felt it's necessary, they come back to you with each one of those. Um, you know, each one, so you can look at on a case by case basis as one comes in and you can say, well, you already have. This one, and it will have some history with, if it, if it's.
True.
You know, if they all come at the same time, we won't have the history except for maybe other locations, but if they, if this staggers in. Um, we'll have a little bit of history as time goes through, so. But that's a good point, that's why I just wanted to make note to the developer that they would have to come in and get each one of these. Approved for designing aspect, and then we'll look at each one of them with the sufficient parking and, and stacking.
Right, and, and do we require ten per one thousand square feet on restaurants?
It's based on seating or square footage, so each one would be, yeah, and we don't count the kitchens. Um, so they would, could come in with whatever they, they have.
Parking then.
Yeah, especially with that parking opposite over there by the vacuum area. And over on the entrance there off of Washington Parkway, there's, there's a lot of parking there, so.
Yeah, and this Commissioner Musso, that was my question, is that. Parking off of the entrance off of Washington Parkway. And I'm not an engineer and I don't know a whole lot of things like that, but wouldn't it make, seems to be, it'd make more sense to flip that one set of parking. With the detention basin, just kinda slide a detention basin over and flip the parking, so it's. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So that it's matching, you know, it goes up against the room. Okay, let me show you what I mean.
So if they took this bank of parking and put it on this side, move the detention basin over this direction. That way the parking would be facing. Building as opposed to, I mean, if this is a coffee shop or a drive thru, they're not gonna have any need for parking over there.
Just employees.
Does, I mean, does that make sense to anybody else or is it just me?
Well, and again, it's a great idea, I think we can wait and see what they bring in at the time and what that building is. The only, the only thing I have with that is that's the exit. You know, when you're coming out of that drive-thru, you already have the one set of bank of stalls and then adding another one to it, and then the exiting on the drive-thru. Might get a little, you know, that, that'd be my only drawback on that, but I, we'd have to wait to see, I think, what that building might be, so. Or what the use is, we, we know it's gonna be a building, but what is gonna be in there? But I, it's a good, a good idea if it works.
Doesn't this establish the parameters of what we're dealing with though, initially?
Any concerns, Drew, with having parking that close to the ingressy grass? That seems to be a, a unique element. That's, if, if there's three businesses and a car wash in there, that's not gonna be a quiet ingress, egress point and parking right there. I guess that just was further to Commissioner Musso's point.
Yeah, well, let's say with the car wash, you know, some of the people, I mean. Are gonna head out on.
It's only right in, right out on, on all, all entrances, right? Access points?
I think so, yeah, because of the, the island on Washington Parkway, this one. This one will be only a ride in, ride out only on, if, if they meet, again, this was one of the things our city engineer asked me to put on here, just to make note of. That that particular one right there on Telegraph, we'll have to make sure that the numbers come in that meet. You know, it's gonna be really close at it on that, that particular entrance and exit. So we'll have to just have that verified that it meets our access management.
This is Commissioner Anderson, that, so my, my biggest concern is, is the. Because they're all right in, right out, you've got, I mean, if you're going northbound, you have a really hard time getting into this thing. It's like, for example, if.
Scroll up a little bit, so I can see the road there. So, if you're going this way here. You know, I mean, right here, the minute you get to here, these people are all gonna, if, if they're going left at all, they're all gonna start. You know, moving into that middle lane of traffic, at the same time, these guys are gonna try to move into that lane. You go in here, I think this needs to be flipped over here, so you've at least got a little bit of room past your turn lane. To be able to, to come in, otherwise it's really, really hard to.
It doesn't give you a turn lane into it.
To get in, and well, you can still turn in from this way here. And, and up there, it's just going northbound, it's super hard to get in, really, really hard. It's just so close. That's, that's my biggest concern, I think you could.
Move that, move that right entrance.
And that would.
Slide that parking down.
Over here, how far is that island go?
It goes quite a ways down.
That's what I'm saying, you gotta really. If you go back to that plan, or I guess you're going to the.
Please state your name.
Name where you're from.
Okay, Jeff Mathis, MRW, so that, you're only seeing half of Washington Parkway right there, and that median does.
And that median does go another 200 feet past our entrance. So there's no left turning into this side, period. Yeah, because there's a median in the way up for like said, 200 feet or so.
So to get into this, I mean, people are going to have to go up and turn around.
They're going to have to plant ahead.
There's no northbound way to get into it at all.
There's not.
All right, that's what I was trying to think of how to do.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, he's, he's getting.
See, the median goes all the way past Ovation. So you cannot cross that at all. And this, this is the area down here we're looking at.
So. Drew, this is Commissioner Bullock on that last, what they were talking about, moving the. The entrance, the right in, right out off of Washington, off of Washington Parkway. It also shows that it's open. Is that going to be a future development up there to the north?
That's going to be an office, isn't it?
It's an adjacent property. These property lines aren't accurate as, as what's been updated, because really our property line is that, that drainage channel.
Right here.
Which. I'm, I'm lying to you. It's, it's actually the next property up. Um, we'd have to look at our plan again, but we are providing access. Shared access through this site for the adjacent property.
So if you.
It is right across the street from that street, so yeah.
So if you move that up to the north, that right in, right out, you would share the access with the other. With the other lot, right?
We could, um.
I don't know what's going to go there. I'm not, I'm not sure what's going to go there, but I mean. How far away is it? Are you going to have another right in, right out on that one too? So we'll have more.
It's 250 feet is not for right in, right out separation. Access management, full, full, um, full access is like 300 feet or 350 feet.
What about on the Telegraph side? Is it too close to the intersection to have any sort of? In our fan turn there at all?
Probably is. It is, yeah. And our planning review meeting with the public works. And based on the Horix traffic study, because they master planned all the traffic for this entire, um, Washington Parkway. So that one access was granted in that management plan or the study, the original approval for a right in, right out. But obviously we've pushed it as far as we can. So, and then right now there's an existing acceleration lane. That it's right there that nobody uses. And so that's going to be striped out and turned into a deceleration right turn lane. Is what the.
He's that all the time.
You're one of those guys. It's just not long enough. It doesn't really get you up to speed.
And it's useless.
Yeah, it's useless. What's that?
Maybe so.
This is Commissioner Hanson. In the conditions, there's a couple of things that address the signage. If I was to take the Dino Dash sign that's at the existing location and put it here, I could see where we might have some nuisance problems with the nearby residents. Is there something that the city? Maybe, I would assume the city is aware of that. Um, that sign's pretty bright and I just want to know maybe. What the city's ordinance is with regard to that going? Is it cut off at certain hours? Is it allowed to go 24 hours a day? What does that look like?
Any electronic message sort like that, they have to have automatic dimming built into them. Okay, so that means that, and they all make them now that way. So as soon as it senses the sun goes down, the brightness that it needed during the day, the lights change to a softer. Not as bright. They can only have so many candles lit is what, how they base it in. But any electronic message board has to have those auto, auto dimming features to them.
Jeff, do you own the other one as well?
I wish I did. No, I'm, I'm, I'm the architect.
Yes, the architect on this one.
All that the owners, oh, the owners are here. Would you like to speak with them?
I was, I was just curious if they use that dimming technique on the other location. Okay, I was going to be surprised. I was like, that's not them. I mean. Okay.
All right, oh, no.
Yeah, I, I think that for, for me personally, as a commissioner, I think that's something that needs to be at least discussed because it, the sign gets your attention and it does what it should, but. On the other one, and that's fine, but the one here we're talking about, there's, there's residences nearby enough that that may become an issue. And then my second question is, does this tie in or need to tie into any of the trails that are in the area being Washington Parkway? Ultimately connecting up to, uh, exit 13. Is there anything that we're not seeing here or is that taken into consideration? Yeah. But on this side, is there anything that's going to take you from Telegraph all the way up that might need to be tied into this or that's planned or anything like that?
It's shown there, um, as this street doesn't have curb and gutter and the borrowed ditches, which Public Works told me they love. Um, we do have that little trail connection.
That's what that is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Drew, should, this is Commissioner Hanson. Drew, should I be? Okay with the signage being addressed and the conditions that are currently on there?
Yes, because when these electronic ones came out, we were one of the first cities that jumped on. You know, the auto dimming of people having, we had one that got in before we got our ordinance. That's that one at the discount tire. That you'll notice, uh, but all the rest of them, if you'll drive by, they all are limited to eight seconds of the message. There's no flashing, no spinning, no. You know, any of that. So that's what, you know, we went and took the state standards for billboards and I loved how it said it and I said. It can be done. So I called the ESCO and they said, yeah, we can put them on those too. So I went through and made sure that all of them could do that and I was assured they could. So that's why we attached the same thing that it's auto dimming. You know, no scrolling, no flashing, circling of things. They can just put a, a message and then. It can, has to stay on a minimum of eight seconds and then the next one just pops up. That one goes away. It's just a, an exchange. So.
Awesome, thanks.
And, and it says that all the lighting should be directed inward to the property.
Right. I, I'm, all I'm suggesting is that the other location, if I took that sign and put it here, I think we'd have an issue. So we've got to address that.
So this is Commissioner Anderson. I guess this is my question to both Jeff and the owners, just since this is different than the St. George location. What, what Drew said is sufficient, right? You guys know what you have to do with the design as far as the lighting. We don't have to put anything in here, right? It sounds, I mean, it sounds like it'll be part of our signage permit, because it is a separate permit that we have the auto dim, dimming capabilities. And then obviously all the, the lighting on the site is down facing shielded. It's part of that.
Yeah. All right, commissioners, any other questions or comments on item six C? No, I'm sorry, seven A. This is, uh, also a public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up for people here in the chambers that would like to speak on this particular item. If you'd like to come forward. Now your name, uh, for Sadie who's taking notes, that would be appreciative. And it looks like at this time there is nobody here that would like to speak on this item, so I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Musso. I propose that we close the public hearing on this item.
Shield, second.
I've got a first and a second to all in favor. I, any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed on this item. Look for any additional or final questions or comments from commissioners. And I'll look for a motion.
I do have a question. Um, this is Commissioner Bullock. So that, where the. This looks like it's going to tie into the other. Northern building block, correct? I'm still right over here. Yeah, right where Drew.
Anticipation is that, that is the case. There's not aware of any existing access easements.
But it looks like you've got it designed so that it will tie into it eventually.
Right.
So, and that's, that's the property line right there, correct?
It is. And if it's a question about still moving the driveways, um, Drew, if you want to flip to the utility plan and zoom in. I think we show some utilities. We were working around, there's some existing storm drains, existing utilities and different things that we're trying to fit that driveway into. And.
I mean, no one.
And also, and then the curve, oh, we didn't have utility plan in there. Um, we've, we've walked that side. Obviously we got the survey and we've, um. We could, I mean, we really could entertain the flopping of the drive, of the parking spaces at the detention pond, if that was something you guys really felt like. Um, the civil engineer's not here, but we did have a reason for placing that driveway where we did. And I think it had something to do with existing utilities.
I was, that's, that's, that's what I was curious. That's what I was curious about, because if you're going to basically share. That entrance with the, with the property to the north. Why not just move it onto the property line? And then you have more, you can move the parking over and like they were talking about the egress of that parking stalls, it would lighten that up. Um, I don't have a problem with them. I was just, I was just curious why, why, why it's not there and that you're sharing, but you're sharing a driveway, basically.
And that's what's in my mind is that we do have that. We also like to kind of have the stacking, because if those, if the actual pay stations, those three lanes on the top right. You know, if those kind of back up a little bit, then it doesn't block the main flow going into the other buildings.
Okay, makes sense.
Awesome, thank you.
It is Commissioner Musso. Make a. Motion, gee, many Christmas. I make a motion that, that we approve. Um, the conditional use permit C dash 21-10. Um, for a commercial development located at 1475 East Telegraph Road at the northwest corner of Telegraph and Washington Parkway. The applicant is MRW Design and Randy Simmison is the, is the owner. With the staff recommendations and findings, the four findings and the 12. Conditions as outlined.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
I've got a first by Commissioner Musso. I've got a second by Commissioner Anderson, individual voting. Uh, Commissioner Musso.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number seven A passes as an approval of conditional use permit. Thanks, Jeff. Item number eight A, this is a zone change. This is a public hearing as well for consideration and recommendation to city council. The zone change request for Z dash 21-21 to change from agricultural 20 acre minimum. To R115 single family residential minimum, 15,000 square foot lots located approximately 3,400 south. Excuse me, at 300 east, the applicant is TJR Properties. I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, the applicant has stated request and approval of the zone change of approximately 28.85 acres. Requested changes as stated from the A20 agricultural 20 acre minimum to the proposed. Single family residential 15,000 square foot minimum or the R115 zoning designation. The applicant is seeking the R115 for the purpose of developing the 28.85 acres into a future residential subdivision at this location. This particular area has a general plan use designation of very low density residential, which allows for the R115 zoning district. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is RA half to the north. R115 and A20 to the east, A20 to the south and RA1 to the west. Staff has no concerns with the proposed zone change since it follows the general plan as outlined. Staff therefore would recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash 21-21. For the zone change request from the A20 to the proposed R115 zoning designation that would be on to the city council. And based on the findings that you see in your report. And I would be more than glad to answer any questions the commissioners have on this proposed Z 21-21.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson. This may just be semantics, but I'm just. In the findings, it says utilities will be necessary for this type of development will be readily accessible. Is it, is that something that they are accessible or they're going to put them in? It says will be ready. I just don't know what that.
Yes, and yes. If it's not there, they'll just extend on to, so. I know out in 20 east, you know, they are out there. Um, they are stubbed over on 300 east to that, to the end of that, that particular area, so. Yeah, so it's a yes to both those. They'll probably have to do some, except of course they'll extend into the project, but on 20 east, they've got all the utilities right there. So Drew. This is Commissioner Bullock. The, the, the very low density was the one just to the south of it, right? Isn't that what they changed it to? No, this is a different. That's, I know, I'm saying one to the south, but it, didn't it go for a zone change? Cause it's right next to the commercial we just did, right? That's this piece right here that, you know, can you see where my thing's bouncing around? That's what was left over. What? Sorry, one more time. See my circling of my cursor up there? Is it? Oh, I can. Right, that's, that's, that is, sorry, no, I see it now. I was looking. Yeah, that's the piece that was part of the snow family one we were talking about earlier and then. You can barely see the commercial part of it way over here where it says zone change. And so that side of it was zoned very low density, correct? It was left, but in the middle, they gave them low density. So you're on this green piece. So it's going to be, this piece is going to back up to. These are the same general plan right now. Yeah. They're low density, very low. Very low density. Okay, this is still A20. They haven't come in for a zone change on that yet. These, this is very low density and they're asking for the R115. Does that help? Maybe. I probably confused you.
A little bit, yeah, so, hold on, you're good.
Well, okay, so Drew, so the stuff in Meadow Lane, you know, it's, it's RA1 with the bonus density. What's those average lots? Are they 15,000 and a half acre, most of them?
On Meadow Lane over here.
Well.
To the west.
Where it says RA, yeah, one to the west.
Yeah, because you have the RA half up above, which you know those are half acre bigger.
Right.
But in Meadow Lane, it was bonus density, but, um, those ones in that particular phase of, of it are probably half acre or bigger in that one. But then when you go over, you know, it's all part of that Brookhaven, you know, is what it ended. Well, this one didn't, but. They're eventually by the same owner, but, um, and then those go into like 12s and 10s and eights in Brookhaven there, so.
So, so this would be real consistent with all that around it.
And then you have up here, you know, you had the Stamps and Estates, which is up in the north, the right, the top right of your screen right there. It's the zone R115. That has that church site and then those 15,000 square foot lots right next to Staley's Corn Maze. That's R115 and that's what these folks are asking for. And just so you know, half acre and R115 are the zones that are right next to each other, you know, that's. So a lot of time you don't like to double step is what it's called. Go from, you know, two, but this one's right in line with going. Plus or minus what it's, you know, next to in size. So that's why I had no issues or concerns with this at all, just due to the fact that it's only stepping one direction and that's always. That's always very acceptable in zoning, so. Did you get back? Did you remember what I confused you about? Yeah, it's, it's, it's agricultural 20 right now. They want to go to R115. Yes, so, but the one just to the, is very low density, which is what? It's R115. Oh, very low is one, R115. Right, very low is, low density is R110 and 12. Okay, that's, that's what I thought, that's where I got confused somehow. Yeah, so when they come, you know, if they follow the zoning, they can only ask for R115 or greater. The snow property that we were talking about over to the, to the east. Yeah, that's what I was wanting to make sure we were just staying consistent with what that one was. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time for anybody here in the chambers that would like to come up and speak to this item. Please come forward and state your name for the record. All right, Sadie, we got somebody. So get your ears ready. Here she comes.
Hi, Julia Kiger, um, live in this half acre lots just north of this. Now, back in July, they were looking to make these half acre lots and then it was re, why have they revised it to just a third of an acre? And do we know how many homes are going to put on it and what size homes are looking at putting on there? Cause at Samstead Estates, they're that 1,500 square feet or whatever, but those huge homes are huge. It's like claustrophobic in that area. Is there any consideration with that?
Well, we don't and, and we don't. All your questions, we don't know why they changed it because they could. You know, they could ask for the R115. Um, sometimes they look at market, how things are moving in the market. Sometimes if half acre lots aren't moving as quick, they're not going to, you know, they'll go back and so they'll always look at the. The market of the size of the lot that they can do the best that they can do. Now, home size, city's never been in the middle of saying it's a minimum of this or a minimum of that square footage. You know, we allow single or two-story homes, always have through anywhere in the city, whether it's a 6,000 square foot lot or a 60,000 square foot lot. Um, they can always build in whatever the buildable envelope is. And the one you referenced earlier, they probably maxed out what I say, build of the envelope is. When I take my setbacks away, I'm going right at that edge and building my, maxing out that area with all home. Not everybody does it, but it sounds like Stamps and Estates probably came close to, you know, right at that 10 foot to 20. sounds like Stamps and States probably came close to, you know, right at that ten foot, the twenty foot, the twenty foot, they put the, you know, the walls of the house out and went and they're all two story homes, I think, aren't they?
And they're huge.
So and that's what the market's hitting right now. If you drive around out there, every single one of those subdivisions I get built, they're built out within six months with big two story homes in them. So is this going to be the same? We couldn't say. And I won't say that it won't, but I won't say that it will because we don't know.
And as to your question about how many lots will be built there at the zoning, at the zone change phase, we don't ask for those details. The the zone change is considered on the merits of the one zone as it currently exists to the next. Of course, they're going to be required to come back through the preliminary plat process. And some of what you've seen applied to other proposals will be applied for whatever lot diagram and access diagram that they they ask for.
Okay, so as adjacent to that lot, will we be notified that again with meeting notes that we could come back and?
Yes, if you got a notice for this, you'll get a notice for the preliminary plat.
Okay, all right. And just a concern, I mean, just a general comment is in a few years, there aren't going to be any fields out in Washington Fields. I mean, there's just going to be houses and it's crazy. And is there any, is there any talk about more schools to provide for all these homes that are going in? I mean, I know they just built all the schools, but those have got to be full. I mean, is there going to be any plans for more schools or anything out there?
Well, the school district runs that, you know, it's not part of us and they're always looking at, they start looking at populations estimated popular. They they're they're ahead of the curve on that. Just, I mean, from my understanding, they're always looking at every city. They want to know what their population growths are. And they start looking at that. They look at certain areas. They're, they actually have people I think that are hired just to do that in the district. So they want it because they want to stay ahead of it because it doesn't help them if they get behind the eight ball on that. So they're always out in the forefront, keeping an eye on where growth is happening. And and they start calculating numbers, you know, with the schools that are already there and then what growth they start saying, okay, by we're going to have to look at another school. So they're always looking at that.
Okay. It just, our vote would be, don't change it, leave it agricultural, but I know that's not going to happen. But okay, thank you.
Kevin Kiger, can we have two speakers from the same household?
No, sorry.
Shouldn't say anything.
I just just want to reiterate the situation. Washington Fields Intermediate School, the road out there is a disaster. I know they've got plans to get that up to speed. But the road along here is a mess as well. And again, I realize this not necessarily the format or the venue for that. But and just ask that we try to stay ahead of that.
Well, just point out, just so you know how roads happen, it's because development happens. City can't afford to go out and keep, you know, build them roads, you know, because then everybody's taxes, we'd have to raise your taxes. So most cities that I know of do a by development, you know, roads get improved. So the one out by the school you talked about, there's not much development on either side. When that takes place, then the roads will get improved on that side of the road. Twenty east right here that you see will now have its build out all the way here. And then the other short road up there will then be completed out on that half. And then they'll be responsible for building half a road on that east boundary.
And speaking of roads, any initiative of all to put another road in there to get to the church from twenty east?
Well, they'll have to tie because we make every developer do circulation through. So I guarantee you there'll be some roads going east and west through this project.
All right, thank you.
Just for the record, there was also initial comment on this item that we received in the mail. We had a chance to review earlier as well, and that's on the record. Anybody else here in the chamber that would like to speak to this item? I'll look for a motion at this time to close the public hearing.
This year I'd propose we close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
I've got a first and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. At this time, commissioners, any additional comments or questions for staff? And if there is not, I look for a motion on this item.
This Commissioner Musso, I make the motion that we recommend we approve the zone change and forward it on to, this has to go to city council, correct, Drew? That we forward this on to city council of Z dash twenty one dash twenty one of approximately twenty eight point eight five acres located at three hundred east and thirty four hundred south from the current egg twenty to proposed single family residential fifteen thousand square foot minimum zoning designation. With the two findings that staff has outlined.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Musso. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock, individual voting. Musso.
Hi.
Sheel.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Bullock.
Hi.
I'm Hanson, I'm an I as well. Item number eight A, we'll send this to city council, recommendation for approval for the zone change. Okay, we'll move to item number eight B. After eight B, we'll plan for a five minute recess for those that need to take a break before we hear the last item. Item number eight B is a public hearing for consideration, recommendation to city council, a zone change request. Z dash twenty one dash twenty two to change from A twenty agricultural twenty acre minimum to P U D R and O S, a planned unit development residential and open space located approximately thirty three hundred south. Oh, boy, Windalayer, is that how you say that? Windalayer Drive, applicant is MST one fifty LLC. We'll turn the time over to staff for the report.
Thank you. Stated, the applicant is requesting approval to change the zoning of approximately twenty five point nine nine acres. Requested changes from as stated, the current zoning of agricultural twenty acre minimum to the proposed planned unit development, multi-family residential designation. The P U D R requires an approved site plan design for property can be used as residential development. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is P U D R and A twenty to the north. R one eight to the west. Ag agricultural twenty and residential, single family residential ten thousand square foot to the east and south. The general plan use designation is planned unit development. This development is proposing, as being proposed, is having a seven point zero zero dwelling unit per acre ratio. The project design is in compliance with the planned unit development residential standards is outlined in zoning regulations. Use utilizing the multi-family development standards as portion of the P U D R. The applicant is proposing one hundred and eighty four townhome units. Each dwelling will be a three bedroom, two and a half bath, two car garage townhome with each unit having a double car driveway. Also added into the project are thirty three visitor parking stalls scattered throughout the development. Communities are in the form of a playground tot lot area with lawn area, basketball court area with cabanas and barbecue, barbecues and lawn area. Another is the three pickleball courts with cabanas and lawn area. And then finally, the two detention areas with lawn that can be used for play areas when not retaining water. Staff has reviewed the proposal. Again, if you remember, this project came before you a couple of months ago when it had the driveways out on the main road. And the council was in line with the planning commissioners and denied that request and they're back with this proposal of internal roads. Staff likes the flow much better, appreciates the developer working on that and getting that taken care of. So staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty one dash twenty two for the zone change request from the A twenty to the proposed planned unit development residential multi-family onto the city council, and that's based upon the findings and subject to the conditions in your report. Be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners have on this Z twenty one twenty two.
Drew, this Commissioner Bullock. The the driveways, this will come back for preliminary plat, right?
This will have to come back for you at preliminary plat. You're correct.
Okay.
Cause you're doing the zoning tonight, but their preliminary plat will have to match what's approved.
Okay, that's that's what I was curious though, because I wasn't sure how big those driveways were. They look yeah, I wasn't sure. It didn't say. So and then I didn't see. So but I mean, we can address that in the preliminary plat, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I kind of took a look. I think all the driveways are a minimum twenty deep and I think they are eight.
Item number ten.
As I put, I think, yeah, the condition anyway, right? Yeah.
Okay, that's that's what I was wanting to make sure of. So that's all. That was the only question I had.
Anything else I can answer before you go in your public hearing, gentlemen, or?
While we're thinking of additional comments, if we have any commissioners, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing on this particular item. If there's anybody here in the audience that would like to speak, please come forward and state your name. This is item eight B. It does not look like there's anybody at this time would like to make a comment, nor did we receive any for the record. So at this time, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Bullock, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sheel, second.
Got a first and a second all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. I just have one clarifying question. This is Commissioner Hanson. First of all, for the developers, thank you for switching this around like we talked. I think it looks much better than what we saw initially. There's a, there's a picture in our packet of the eight plex that looks like this. And it's probably on there and I'm just not reading it right. I just wanted to make sure there's a change in not elevation, but a bump out between the stucco and the the paneling there. I believe there is. I just want to make sure there is. On the rear, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it looks like it pops out a little and then extends in the roof line area as well, that white versus the the black area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got a little bit, is it about eight inches, twelve inch pop out maybe? Any variety will help and the color change. So you know what it is by chance?
Adam Allen, American Land Consulting. I believe it is a foot.
They don't. I couldn't tell. It's not on.
But so it's question, Adam.
There it is.
Those are for the
This is the same.
Is that the, no, those
This is the south side and that's what we're looking at, right?
Those are the north side townhomes. I don't think we had floor plans on the south side.
Oh, you say south side here and then I thought this one said, yeah, you got south side written right there.
Yeah, I I'm sorry. I don't think those are it. I apologize.
There's a
I just might, this Commissioner Hanson, the reason for my question is I want to make sure that it's not just one continuous flat piece with this development or any additional in the community. So that's all.
See, it's my, I guess my question, Adam, is from the elevation, it looks like there's a step, but the plan shows no step. It just shows it as one solid straight line on the back wall.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the floor plans that are in there. And I believe that those are we had to make a modification to the floor plans. We brought the wrong one. So I was out of town when they submitted that the guys at my office printed the wrong ones in. I believe, because those still say seven plex and we don't have any seven plexes in there anymore. So.
I would imagine from looking at the elevation, it looks like you took every unit and staggered them front and back on every one of them. From the elevation, it just doesn't show it on the plan.
And I apologize. We tried to replace that. We sent in the wrong stuff. So I can
You're aware. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
For sure. I know that's a big, and I'll make sure that we have that for city council for sure, because I know that's a big sticking point with everybody because those are all going to be rear facing to that road.
Yeah. It looks a lot better though. Like I said, thank you for doing this. Look, we think it looks better.
Sometimes, you know, somebody has to be told no.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. It looks much, much better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments for staff or the engineer? Or developer, right? Developer, engineer, both? Okay, engineer. And if there is nothing, I'll look for a motion on this item.
Did we close the public hearing?
No.
Okay.
We didn't? Oh, man.
You did.
I thought I closed it.
Yeah.
It's been closed.
I stand corrected.
Still batting a thousand. Yes.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve Z dash twenty one dash twenty two, a request to rezone approximately twenty five point nine nine acres located approximately thirty three hundred south Windalayer Drive from the current agriculture twenty acre minimum A twenty zoning to a proposed planned unit development residential zoning designation. With the two findings by staff and ten conditions and send it to city council for consideration.
This she'll lie second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Sheel. Individual voting, Musso.
Hi.
Sheel.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Bullock.
Hi.
I'm Hanson, I'm an I as well. The item passes, we'll send that to city council with a recommendation for approval. At this time, we're going to take a five minute recess for those that need a break and we will reconvene for the last item on the agenda in a few minutes. Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess for those that need a break, and we will reconvene for the last item on the agenda in a few minutes, thank you. Okay, Kathy, are we, Kathy and Sadie, can you hear us okay?
Yes, we are ready.
Perfect. All right, we will go ahead and reconvene this meeting. And here, item number eight C. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the city council, a zone change request, Z dash twenty-one dash twenty-three, to change from open space to P C D planned community development located north of Washington Parkway. The applicant is Clyde Greensprings LLC, G W C Capital LLC, Brooke Cole. I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, stated applicants requesting a zone change of approximately five hundred and seventy acres. The requested change is from, as stated, the current open space zoning and is being proposed for a planned community development, P C D zoning designation. The general plan land use for this particular area is combined open space, low density residential, medium density residential, and civic. The surrounding general plan use designations are open space to the north and east, community, commercial, low density residential and medium density residential, and the civic to the south and west. The surrounding zoning to this particular development proposal is open space to the north and east, with general commercial C three and open space, single family residential six thousand and ten thousand, administrative professional, and the Brio planned community development, all to the south and to the west. The P C D project name being proposed is Green Springs, the project is being proposed as a community that will consist of single family residential homes, patio homes, townhomes, apartments, condominiums, and a hotel resort development. Also being proposed in an area set aside referred to as the commercial mixed use area, which will have an overlay of vacation rental units utilizing in the, within the townhomes and the condos built in that particular area. There are also several amenity locations scattered throughout the project and a park and open space area with develop, with this development. The, there will also be a trail system throughout the project, will so, which will also be attached to the B L M Turtle Reserve that borders this particular proposal on the north boundary. As noted above, the project will have several types of residential and commercial mixed uses. There will be the resort district consisting of an upscale hotel and available rooms and cabins, dining and spa facilities, which will consist of two hundred dwellings, dwelling units. The resort village district, consisting of primary and secondary residential units in the form of condominiums, villas, townhomes, and estate residential homes. There will be a proposed two hundred and forty-nine dwelling units in the, the resort village district. Moving on to the mixed use village district, which will consist of commercial and residential uses in the form of retail stores and shops on the ground floor level, and residential units above consisting of apartments and condominiums. Within the mixed use village district, there is a proposed four hundred and fifty-nine dwelling units. Moving on to the residential village district, or districts consisting of a variety of single family detached townhomes and flats, there will be a proposed eight hundred and twenty-four dwelling units in this particular residential village district. Then we move on to the estate village district consisting of single family detached residences, which is, are being proposed four hundred and sixty-eight dwelling units within the east village districts. And finally, the open space recreational district, which is roughly a plus or minus one hundred and sixty-eight acres, consisting of comprehensive trail system, a public park, neighborhood parks with playgrounds, access points or trailheads to the Red Cliffs Reserve, and a significant open space area left in natural untouched terrain. The total number of dwelling units throughout the development will be roughly twenty-two hundred units. Staff has reviewed the requested zone change, finds that it conforms to the general plan, the zoning ordinance, and surrounding proposed development. Staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty-one dash twenty-three for the zone change request from open space to the proposed Green Springs Plan Community Development or P C D, with its associated project plan guidelines and development agreement that will be reviewed and approved by the city council. So I just wanted to start off with our map, this is the overall area that shows all those districts we talked about. Let me get out my trusty pencil. And this purple area here, you know, can you see my pencil kind of jumping around there? Or you want me to outline it, but this is the hotel resort area over here in this particular area, of course, pointed out in the resort category, then next to it across the, the main drag is the resort village, which will have a lot of those cabins, villas, et cetera, that'll be primary, you know, and secondary units and vacation rentals that'll be available in here. Cabins, all kinds of mixed different uses in there that they'll be able to have. This will be run through like the, the resort area, I think, as a combination help there is, you know, a lot of the uses, especially on the short term, will happen.
I think it's, I think it means cabana.
Yeah, well, they call them cabins, you know, I mean, but I, you can go up, and I've been in some really nice cabins. Really, really nice cabin, so. But I think they'll just be units, you know, that are kind of standalone type units that can be used as part of the resort amenities and what they offer. Moving on to this particular pink area right here, is which is going to be that mixed used village. It's where a lot of that little boutique shops, you know, on the first floor with flats and condos and apartments above. This will be probably your highest density area, you know, because of the acreage and number of units. But this will be one of those unique areas that you can find in a lot of like resort towns, like a park city, I would say, or, you know, there's a lot of great places in, in Colorado, you know, that are, have that design. You know, where you'll be right off of the street. Parking will be behind or in other places, et cetera, in the mixed juice. Then you move on to the yellow area, which is going to be your basic, just standard residential village. You know, that'll have those smaller lots, et cetera, smaller homes available. These green areas are kind of park areas or, or grow areas, they want to grow a lot of product as part of the resort, you guys have been in the meetings, they're going to have a culinary school and, and part of that with the resort, they'll grow a lot of their own stuff in, in these particular plant areas throughout the project. And these are some of those that you see here, these green squares in the middle. Then you move on to your brown areas here, beige brown, which are more of your estate villas, et cetera, that'll have, you know, the nicer, more custom, larger homes. I'm in them, some of them will be gated, if not all. Except for the areas, of course, heading into the trailheads will not be within those gated community areas. People will have access to all those, the trailheads you can see are circled in blue here. Here, you know, right here, and then down on this far east end, that you'll be able to cross into the, the tortoise reserve. This is where the city park will be. And that'll be located there, it'll be that, and then there's a bunch of mini pocket parks is what a lot of people use the term, and they'll have those throughout the project within all of the developments, just little community pocket parks. And then, of course, this kind of green color is a lot of that open space, some of it will be professionally landscaped, and a lot of it will be left in the open terrain, like you see in San Diego Hills. Or Coral Canyon, that just leaves some of those areas with natural washes, et cetera. But then you'll have trail systems that'll go throughout the whole development, where people can get on and just move, you know, within, not have to be on the roads and enjoy the, the area. Some, there's some beautiful sights up in this, this area where you have a lot of that red rock face that I think is some of Washington's most treasured views are right up in this area here. So that's the P C D in a nutshell, I know the commission's had a lot of time to review this and some work sessions, et cetera. But officially tonight is the public hearing, and looking for the commission's recommendation on the city council. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners have for me or staff at this time.
Thanks, Drew, appreciate it. At this time, what I'm actually going to do is open this up to a public hearing, for those of you that are in the audience that would like to make a comment, that way they can be considered as we move forward and talk with the developer or staff, is there anybody here in the chambers that would like to speak to this item? Please come on forward and state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Wendy Warren, and I live across the road from where this is all going to develop. I wrote, my husband and I wrote some comments that I believe all of you already received, thank you. And it's such a rough plan, having lived there for a long time. Where, it doesn't show where the creek is, what the elevations will be, in other words, from the yellow community. The creek kind of runs around that, and then it very steeply goes up the hill. So at what point will we see where the creek runs through? And elevations, because it's, it's pretty dramatic. Anyway, and it looks like the sand dune is gone. I guess I'll just build on a natural sand dune, which I didn't know you could do. Anyway, I'd be curious to know that, and then our other comments, of course, were to pass along a recommendation that, you know, night sky or dark sky lighting be considered for the entire development so that we can still see the sky. Those are my comments, so, once it goes to the city council, how, do they have a timeline for how long the city council considers this with more sort of definite planning, you know, where we can see some of this stuff?
So there's three hundred plus pages that have been submitted with this tonight.
I saw the notebook.
Yeah, and so, whether this body recommends for approval or for denial, the city council will then have the same opportunity to consider for approval or denial. And the timeframe is just consistent with our meeting scheduling timeframe, and so I would anticipate that this would be the city council's next regular, regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, that, those were my only comments, we know it was going to be developed, no surprise, so just hoping that it, we get to keep some of our specialness, thank you.
Thanks, Wendy, we'll have the developer talk to the, your questions in just a little bit to answer. Anybody else here in the chamber that has a comment? I will look for a motion to close the public hearing on this particular item.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Anderson, I second.
We got a first and a second all in favor. Hi, any opposed? Drew, I have a question for me, just for learning experience, sometimes I like to do this just to get the questions on the table, and we can, is there a downside to just opening? Is there a downside to just opening and closing a public hearing right away? Should I not be doing that?
No, you're fine. You ask if anybody else is coming, you know, and you kind of just have to play that kind of by ear. If you, you know, when you do ask, I would just, you know, before you do close it to anybody else. And if you don't see any movement, then feel free. You don't. Sometimes I think we sit and play the Jeopardy music and count, you know, from one hundred down. We don't need to to go that extent. You just have to, you you've been doing just fine. I think we had, nobody's been ever cut out. And if they have, you know, we've always let let them come up and and talk. So no, you're you're fine.
Perfect. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions that you have for staff.
I don't know. I I did read Mrs. Warren's comments, and I can't disagree with them on lighting. I like her ideas and and I'm hoping that. And I think they're trying to make it a special development. I'm in favor of the development. I hope it is special. I do like the idea of no two-story, but I don't think we're going there. Just, I don't think Washington City really does that. Kianta has got a sound special feel out there to where you go out there and you see everything. But and you don't see the houses. This is going to be a little bit different because it's on the hill. You're going to see the houses. And and hopefully they do make it special so that they keep their night sky and they can still see their views.
This is Commissioner Hanson. Drew, one of the things from the beginning that we learned about was the secondary water supply. How big of a deal is that for the city? I mean, is that a massive benefit that we're receiving or is it middle of the road or?
So I'll talk to that. The this project is not contributing to secondary water supply as it relates to supply. It does propose that it will cooperate with the city's plan with development of the city's existing or future obtained secondary water sources. And that contribution is proposed that it would essentially provide lakes or ponds, holding ponds that would sit at an elevation where the city could pump its water supply to those locations and then utilize those ponds as both for settling and pressurizing the city's downstream secondary water service lines. But this project is not providing any secondary water supplies. It's just providing the elevation and the space for those sources to be managed.
And how how big of an impact is that for us as a city? Is that? Like I said, is that a big deal, little deal? Scale of one to ten?
I don't know how to answer that question. The I think the city believes that it needs to improve its secondary water systems as part of the goal of water conservation, if we can get properties using the secondary water for their outdoor needs. And so the concept of delivering it to an altitude where it can pressurize and then be utilized by more properties. Right now, the city's secondary water is a surface gravity flow just through ditches and canals. And so it has limited use only to the properties that it flows by. This project would allow a pressurized system that could be expanded for use beyond those properties. And so that's a big deal as far as conservation and and converting outdoor culinary use to to outdoor secondary use. Could the city accomplish that at other elevations through other means? Probably.
Is there a current plan to do that if this isn't approved that the city has?
The current plan, as you see with this project, was developed for this project. The city's been talking about settling and pressurizing ponds long before this concept came. It just seemed to work that this concept could incorporate those. But yeah, there'd been plans before this for that similar concept.
So question that this is Commissioner Anderson in. In speaking with some of, you know, city council and and the mayor recently, there's some talk about the Water Conservation District doing a district-wide secondary system as opposed to the individual cities doing it. If that's the case, how does that impact this? Does this get incorporated into the water district system? Or are we trying to operate something parallel to it? Or we have any idea about that?
Yeah, the city's aware of the district announcing fairly recently that they would like to essentially replicate their culinary line with also a secondary line. And and when these plans started to be drawn up, that wasn't known, but that's become available recently. This proposal and the city's current proposal would be its independent secondary system from the districts. The district hasn't approached the city and or or, you know, started a conversation of the city's contribution to the district's proposed secondary line. Not aware that that conversation is has started yet.
So I guess my my question is is that, let's say that, you know, this is proposed, it's approved. And, you know, let's let's say that that you know, consideration of some sort is is given to them for, you know, for the use of the ponds or whatever. And then the water district develops her system and the city never does anything with it. Is that a possibility?
Yes. So the way the development agreement, so there's a development agreement exhibit in your packet, which mostly I want to say is not going to reflect the end. That reflects the document they submitted to the city. The city's been editing and amending it based on the different departments review and and feedback. But the one area that won't change much is the secondary water area, which essentially just says, if the city asks them to, they will cooperate with the city's plans to develop a secondary water system within their development. Doesn't require the city to do that. It doesn't obligate the developer to bring any water or use a system if the city even makes one. Now, I think the plan would be that if the city develops a secondary water system, that they would, you know, be users of it as what other downstream ones. But yeah, if the city, if the if the district's plans become something that the city just wants to contribute their secondary water to in exchange for whatever the district offers, this proposal does not limit the city from making that choice.
So I guess I guess my comment on that, just for the record, would be to city council that that in light of that, that, you know, I don't think the city council should should promise any, you know, impact fee credits or 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 advanced funds or this or that on something that may or may not happen. I think it should happen on it on the basis of if it actually does get used.
Yeah, so the way the development agreement reads right now is that the developer will cooperate if the city asks it to. And that it would be reimbursed for any land or expenses that the developer expends in cooperation. But other than that, there's no no offer, no no bargain other than 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 that.
So if they use the ponds for detention basins or whatever, and the city never does anything for it, then that's that's their detention.
Yeah, they they can build the ponds and fill them with water from another source. You know, if the city doesn't have a secondary water system, it would either be from a secondary water source that they acquire or from the culinary. Again, part of the goal with developing our secondary system is to not use culinary for those type of outdoor purposes. But yeah, they could still do ponds if the city plans that with their secondary water system otherwise.
And so I guess, again, one other comment, I would say if if they don't have the means to fill them with secondary water sources, I would say definitely don't put culinary water in those ponds to evaporate out. We've got little enough water as it is.
I know that in some of the other developments that have outdoor water features, there's there's modern technologies that limit evaporation and and, you know, absorption and those things. But at some point, water loss is water loss, whether it's a whole bunch or a little bit, right? Especially if it's of a culinary source that's got limitations. So we appreciate that feedback.
One of the things I was going to do is is, I don't know, I think most of our questions are for the developer necessarily, I'm sorry, instead of staff. And so, Brooke, if you wouldn't mind coming up and addressing some of these questions, that would be helpful. And in fact, while you come up, again, please remember to state your name for the record. You might even want to just start with maybe the two that were talked about, the lighting in the in the development and then about the creek and what that will look like. And we might even have a picture somewhere in their show.
Absolutely. Brooke Cole and Chairman Hanson, thank you for the opportunity to address those two items. First, Commissioner Anderson, regarding the ponds that are there on the property, those are just storage for the secondary water. And so if the city doesn't want them, doesn't need them, we're not going to develop them. That's really there to show the elevations that can work into the overall city's plan. And Wendy, is that correct? You know, it is our desire to preserve the night sky as much as we can. And we have proposed in the documents you guys have have read and gone through the major loop road. The city has requested that we maintain a streetlight on that major loop road that goes up and comes back down to the parkway. But everywhere else in the development, we'd like to propose to use bollards instead, pedestrian oriented bollards in the park strips and down at the street level instead of standard streetlights that light up the whole thing. And it's down lighting, but it would be a a higher, yes, because of the safety concern, I think, related to that. And the power department has provided us additional direction related to that, which we submitted to the city that will supply the lights. And the city would maintain those, but everywhere else in the development, it would be supplied and owned and maintained by the H O A.
And that's probably also, this is Commissioner Hanson, where you expect most of your traffic also for, like you were saying, for safety. I would think that's where most of the traffic is going to be on that main loop there, correct?
Yes, sir.
When I think of this project, Brooke, one of the things that I continuously go back to, and there's probably a very good reason. And that's why I would like you to maybe explain it to me. Did we think about or is there a way to get commercial closer to the hospital? Because I when I think of the commercial piece, I think of who's going to use it to get as much tax revenue as we can. I know in our previous meetings, you've talked about not taking away from other commercial across the way, which I completely understand. I get that. But I would, I just keep going back to, man, I wish there was something there closer to the people that are at the hospital where I would assume will be full all the time or a majority of the time, that people could then come across the street and enjoy that commercial there. I just wanted, did you guys ever consider that or is there a reason it's not there?
Absolutely. We did consider that. And we not only considered it there, but we also looked at holistically everything that's going on around all of Exit thirteen. And there's a lot of commercial going on around Exit thirteen to the north there and the northeast, as well as to the south of Maverick and that area as well. So when we look at the reason it's shown in in a buff color there is because of the carrying capacity of what the land can actually do. And the land form in there is a lot more rugged and more steep in that area. And so we have matched the land use to actually the carrying capacity of the land. If we were to put commercial in there, needs a lot more flat parking lots, buildings on either side of it. And so it would require a lot more disturbance in that area as opposed to low residential housing in there that can conform more to the land.
I figured, you know, I just was like, man, it'd be great, but yeah.
But but that was one of the is part of one of the work sessions. There was a desire to include more in the property, more opportunity for office and and boutique commercial restaurants and things like that. So that's why the area of the mixed use village was expanded is so that that can be centered into the core of it and not have a negative impact on any of our other surrounding neighbors as well.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Anderson. On that same vein, so I personally, I like I like the idea of, you know, trying to stick to the the existing topography as much as you can. I really like the dark lighting or the the bollard lighting to minimize, you know, the light pollution and so forth. And I think visually, you know, the more residential and so forth, the better. I I do, from an economic perspective, I do worry just that, and it's not just this project, all over town, our our residential projects are outpacing commercial development, you know, quite a bit. And so not not that that's necessarily your particular burden here. It's just when we're bringing on a lot of houses, I worry about the fact that we're bringing on more residential than than commercial to at least support that tax base. But I also understand that it's kind of hard to, you know, it's not like you can put a McDonald's right in the center of the resort or whatever. I mean, I get that, but I I would say whatever, whatever means you can to really try to to, I don't know what the word would be, enhance the mixed use area to really try to drive some some tax base revenue to support the community itself would would help.
Agree. That's the reason why it was expanded, to hopefully address that concern. Thank you.
All right. So I got more questions, I guess. What? I know we've got all the different, you know, amount of homes and stuff in each in each village, but it's still a little unclear. I mean, how many vacation rentals do we actually have? Like, like, what's the total number? Because I know there, you know, some condos, some private homes.
Two hundred and forty-nine.
Two hundred and forty-nine is a vacation.
So in reference to that, then, so the resort villa, does that mean? I'm I'm trying to picture what this is. It's not a standard hotel then. It's a it's a hotel with basically freestanding casitas. Is that's how it's designed? Because you have two hundred units there, and I'm not sure what those, do those two hundred units belong, are they owned by the hotel themselves?
It's a good question. So you have a standard hotel block, and then you have additional rooms in scattered units beside the hotel. So you have both. So the room count for a hotel would would be in addition to the standard block, you would have other casitas that are one, two, up to four bedrooms in size that people can rent as their hotel room. And so those two hundred units are the additional units outside of the main hotel, which would be considered your standard commercial block with your event space and spa and those other things.
Okay, so then the the two hundred and forty-nine resort villa units, are they managed by the hotel themselves?
They're managed by a professional management company, yes, by the hotel. And that's the reason why they're located next to each other. So the resort villas are the, if you'll go up one more, Drew, please. It's everything inside the loop there in blue.
Right.
And that that is the only area that would be nightly rental available. It doesn't have to be, but it would be a mix of primary and secondary residential in there.
Okay, so here's my next question then. So as a as an investor buyer in one of these two hundred and forty-nine units, I'm dependent upon the hotel renting out my unit.
No.
Well, if they're the property manager.
Not in the blue.
Isn't that what we just stated, though? Because didn't you just say that the hotel management company was the one who's going to manage the blue section also?
That's correct, but that's managed more as a traditional nightly rental rental pool program, not part of the actual hotel reservation system. They're two different operations managed by the same company.
But they're providing essentially some of the same product.
Essentially, but at different sizes and at different rates. And a different access as well. So let me give you an example, if if you may. On in the resort area itself, if you want room service, then room service can come to your actual casita. That's not provided in the resort residential area. So think about just your traditional hotel services that you have. That's all scattered throughout the resort area. The other is more of a traditional rental pool that the management company manages, but they don't take hotel reservations and push them over there to that area. Because this this area over here, the resort is actually a branded resort and run by the resort and the resort standards. But it's since it's a professional management company, they're there anyway. They can manage the other side as well, but it'd be two different reservation systems.
So this is Commissioner Tupow. So are you saying that that side, it's managed by the hotel management, but it's separate? So is it, and people actually own those units? Okay, so is it kind of like a timeshare type management? No?
No, 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 it's wholly owned.
Okay.
So no timeshare.
Okay.
So this is Commissioner Anderson. I have two other questions that are kind of related. So with with the multifamily lots, is that, and I know you probably, you may not have that planned planned out yet or not, but. is the plan to have like, you know, one builder build all of them, and they're all kind of the same elevation, same plan, so forth? Or is it something where you'll have different sections? The different builders will have different plans, or are you going to sell off lots to other people? Like, what's the, what's the idea with the multifamily?
In the mixed-use residential? Is that what you're referring to? Yeah. Those in that area primarily be done by one builder, just because of the continuity of being able to develop out the ground floor space and/or office space up above, and then they manage the residential units up above that as well. It may, it may be multiple, just depending on the location of it in there, but our desire is to only have one, if we could.
So are those units then, are they going to be apartments, or are they going to be condos?
They could be either or.
No, it's, well, it's not the same thing. A condo is people actually can create wealth. Where an apartment is, it's a conglomerate.
Well, yeah, that's, it's just a different ownership structure.
Yeah, yes and no. Structurally, structurally, it's the same building. Right, right. Now, my question is ownership. Because, you know, as many apartments as we've built off of Exit 13, you know, it doesn't generate wealth to individuals, because they're just renting. They're not be able, they can't create their own.
I would, I would think, and I guess you, you tell me your opinion, Brooke, but I would think for this type of project, that I don't think apartments would lend itself so much. If you have apartments, then it's essentially sort of, I guess more long-term rental, but it's sort of expanding that rental pool of the, of the
Of the resort.
The resort village or whatever. You know, where they're not nightly rental, but they're sort of, you know, monthly rental or whatever. I would think for the continuity of the project that that condos would lend themselves a lot better, that where again, people can own their individual, you know, units and so forth. I would worry about the same thing, where we'd have just this massive block of apartments, you know, between the area to, you know, below it and the resort area. I would be more inclined to have them be condos than apartments. I don't know, what, do you have any detailed thoughts on that, or?
Well, it's really market-driven, related to that, and the desire for apartments versus condos. Condominium financing sometimes is very tough for the end consumer, not for the developer, but for the end consumer. And so there's that factor to weigh into it as well. But I, we have envisioned in there, the majority of them would be condominiums and apartments from an affordability perspective. Because one of the things that we've heard through the last couple of work sessions and the last eight months of going through this, is try to be as inclusive as possible, not exclusive. And so providing all of those building types and all of those residential forms is the purpose in allowing for both in there.
So if it's more apartments, I guess one of my concerns would be, and it is odd, because it is structurally the same thing, but apartments lend themselves to having a lot more parking needs and and trash pickup needs and things like that than condos do. It's just the nature of, you know, different people living there and so forth, so that if it's going to go more apartments, I think that would be something need to be looked at is that, you know, guest parking, for example, is a lot bigger issue with apartments as opposed to condos.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good comment, thank you.
With regards, this is Commissioner Hanson, with regards to the single-family residences, if I understood, and I just want to reiterate my understanding, there will be other builders, but they need to adhere to a certain design standard that your company will oversee, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, as outlined in the PCD.
Okay.
For each village.
So I guess this is my last question, and it's related to what he said, sort of. And in, so in full disclosure, I'm a home builder, right, so I build custom homes. Not that I'm looking to pick up lots in here, and that's not my intention here, but I do, I do have a concern with regards to all of the local builders in town. And that is, especially with like, for example, you know, down in Desert Color. I mean, there are some lots that the local builders, you know, are building on and so forth. You know, but, you know, a huge five-hundred-plus track of lots, you know, were just sold to, you know, a national builder, and I I have concerns, again, not for me, but for the local, you know, building community at large, that we'd have big chunks of these estate lots sold to, you know, national or regional builders. Again, which, even though they're using a similar subcontractor pool, you know, the revenues from those homes, they don't stay here in Washington County, they don't stay here in Washington City. They all go out of state, or out of town at least. And, and the more of that, of that type of national builder that comes in, the more strain there is on the local economy, and as a builder, there's a huge strain right now on labor force. There's not enough labor force for local builders that are here. And when you sell a large chunk of lots like that to an outside builder, then usually what happens, they come in and they monopolize and take the labor force, and it just causes a chain reaction across the local economy. And so, again, I'm not looking for myself, I'm I'm really concerned with the local building, you know, economy in general.
Absolutely, and so let me address that if you don't mind. When you were asking the question earlier about single builder, multiple builders, and I referenced our preferences to be one, that is in the pink area only. Okay, and so I want to make sure that that's clear, and that's just because of the massing and the parking and all of those things.
And I would say, as a builder, the, you know, the condos or apartments or whatever, that is easier to build as one builder than.
Everything else in the residential village and in the estate village is going to be sold on an individual basis, lot by lot, not as in bulk chunks to one builder or another. And that also includes bring-your-own builder as well. So the public who doesn't necessarily have access to lots will now have access to lots to commit and to buy those, go through the architectural design guidelines through that review committee and build their own home as well.
So how do you foresee that working with attached units?
On attached units, you're not necessarily going to have one person come in and says, I want to build just this one townhouse. You'll have a builder like Commissioner Anderson come in and say, I want to buy this eight-plex or this four-plex on this corner. They'll go through the design process, they'll build that one four-plex and then sell that to the end consumer.
So the end consumer doesn't really have the option of buying the lot themselves, only in the four hundred and sixty-eight single-family lots?
And also in the residential village as well, if they want to buy a smaller lot. That's really the only difference between the two.
So is the, so everything in the residential village are going to be individual lots, they're not going to be four-plex buildings?
No, sir, it's a mixture of attached and detached.
This is Commissioner Hanson, could a developer come in and bid on a block of lots, twenty-five, thirty lots?
No.
So it's limited?
It'll be limited.
Okay.
Oh, no spec houses?
The builders can build spec houses, yes. Yeah, the builders have built spec houses, but I think to Commissioner Anderson's question, they're not going to cordon off fifty to a hundred lots in a certain area or half of a development pot and just say, this is this builder. That's not, that's not the intent here. And as far as Desert Color goes, misinformed, not one national has all of a block, other than a active adult builder that is specific to that community and the investment to active adult.
So, well, okay.
And I can visit with you after, and make sure, and make sure that we're well informed on that.
And this is one of those issues that's, that goes beyond the scope of the hearing tonight. You know, we get to look at all of the details and all the specs. And, you know, we always assumed that applications are going to draw from our, our local building service industry, but it's not an area that the law has allowed us to regulate, and so I'm not sure.
No, but I think, I think what Brooke, you know, is saying, I think is really important for our local economy. I think the fact, you know, where he's saying, you know, builders of wherever they may be can buy, you know, individual lots or individual multifamily pads or whatever, I think that's really important, and I I think that, you know, councilman Ward is here in the crowd, I would say, I think that's really important for city council to consider that. Coats, excuse me.
And
Can't vote because he's part of the agreement.
I know, but he can talk to people, that's all, there's nobody else there, so.
And candidly, what Mr. Cole said, I think is smart business for this area too, right? But, but if, if you're considering making any sort of a condition or a contact with that, I'd encourage you not to, because it's an area we're not allowed to regulate.
That's all. You know our other businesses, it's in our best interest to support all of those builders, and it's one of the reasons why we're in this business. Thank you. To do this, thank you.
This is Commissioner Musso, I have a question again also. I know in our last work meeting, that the community development director brought up issues of jobs and types of jobs and employment, and what the economic benefit would actually truly be to the city, and she was very concerned about the single use essentially. And then some ancillary things that might support the single use. Have, has anybody given any more thought to that at all? And I was just wondering why she wasn't here this evening to voice concern about that also.
All I can say is that we provided her the information regarding the single use on the employment base that would be anticipated there, but also in the mixed-use area, there's other employment base there. And there's lots of employment base in all the houses too. A lot of people work from home. And as I mentioned in the work session, there are certain areas of the city that need residential, there are certain areas that are the business parks and those things as well, so I think we're here to support the whole city grow in that regard, and this is our portion of the contribution towards it.
I'm glad you got rid of the golf course, thank you. As a golfer, I was like, all right, and then I thought, no, that's going to be a hard road to, road to go uphill. But yeah, thank you, I really liked the project, the way it turned out, the way you've done, so.
Well, thank you guys for your comments and your suggestions and your willingness to work with us and the city staff.
I have one other question for you. This is Commissioner Anderson, this is an easy one, but I would just, and we talked about this in the, in the work meeting before, but and I know that you've already kind of worked this through, but I just would, would reiterate with the trailhead, I would just make sure that we have, you know, as much parking as possible, and particularly the ones where you're encouraging the horse traders and stuff, that we have plenty of turnaround room and parking room, and I wouldn't want to go to all that trouble and have people pulling horse traders complain that they can't actually get them in and out, so.
Thank you.
This is Sheil. I, in the three hundred pages, Drew told me that there was a page in there that talked about phasing. And I'm sorry, I didn't find that. But is this the meeting to talk about phasing, or do we do that in the next? You know, I mean.
Well, it was pretty simple, I think. They start, they're going to start with the resort area, and then, you know, those two villages will come. Then I think they're moving to this yellow area right here, it's phase three, if I remember right. I only looked at it once, but but each, yeah, almost each village was its own different.
Do you finish one phase before you start the next, or are we going to kind of?
It's a, it's a good question, Commissioner Sheil, and if you mind, I will go over and point to this to help explain it.
Let me go to the full-color one there, calling the main one. Like.
Let me see if I stand here. So this area right here is where we're going to start. Bringing this road in, coming back out, so that you can bring on all three of these colors at the same time. The goal of this project is that all of these villages get built out simultaneously so that the project finishes roughly at the same time, as opposed to only building this, then going to this product, then going to this product, and to that product, and so on and so forth. So that eventually, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, when the whole thing is finished, it's all done at one time, and you don't have laggards where construction's still lagging in there for another ten or fifteen years thereafter. Back to just the quality of life within the community as well. So the goal is to start here in the core and ready outward from there. So this direction and that direction. The reason we're starting right here is because it brings on all three of these products, plus gives access for the hotel to get in and get started as well, in that area.
Thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions for the developer?
Thank you for your questions. And thank you Wendy as well, appreciate it.
I can go on, I'm sorry, so. There was a, there was a thing about forty-five, this is Commissioner Musso, again, this, there was a height restriction of forty-five feet. Is that standard for the city, Drew?
Well, depends on what
I read something, it was forty-five feet.
Forty-five is commercial.
Right.
Multifamily is forty-two. This is a city, you know, now we'll find, let me go to your page here. Is the height in your setback area page?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the, I'm going to find that page for you here. Sorry, I hope I'm not making anybody not, there we go. Let's see. Okay, yeah, so here's the building heights, Commissioner, as you see, so they're asking for fifty-five feet at the resort, which is the hotel, and it's not kind of out of line, we've had other people come in, I think that the hotel we did over by Terrible's was, ended up getting fifty-two feet awarded. So then you go into the resort, I'm just going to scroll down a bit so I can see these headlines here. So the main building in the resort village, which is again, your, could be condos or, you know, et cetera, and that particular thing can be forty, and our, our standard for multifamily is forty-two. Okay? So they're actually right in range with that. In the mixed-use, they're asking for, it's kind of hard because that's a mixed-use, it's commercial and residential. In our commercial zones, we allow forty-five feet. So, you know, you could say, well, if they're doing the three feet, I don't know if we, you know, again, this is a PCD. I'm fine, I don't think forty-five feet is out of line. Residential village, that one is a little bit higher than what our standard is, but again, you know, because it is a PCD, and they also have in there that they could be condos and townhomes in that area, it's only five feet above, so I would hope that the main structure doesn't mean a single-family home at forty feet, I would imagine it's a multi. So I think staff's fine with the forty feet. And then you're going in the state village, which is a, you know, standard residential kind of zone, thirty-five is what the city has everywhere anyway. So I don't think our heights are out of line.
So can we go back to the original diagram and show me exactly where the hotel is going to be located?
Is it right here, these white boxes right here where my arrow is?
That is correct.
Can you see where the blue circle is? Commissioner Musso, these, these two lighter, bigger rectangles or squares? That's the culinary in the hotel. Those two boxes right there, that's the main hub of the hotel, restaurant, culinary school, et cetera, is right there. So that's way up in that corner of the development.
Right in front of the tallest ridges, right?
Well, I'm not sure where the tallest ridges are up there in relationship to this, I I'm usually good with spatial things, but in this one, I haven't gone and spatialized that in my head yet, but.
Is there a fire station up there?
The fire chief will ask for a fire, if you were building doghouses, sorry, Matt, I didn't mean to do that to you, I know, he better be laughing right now. But we have a fire station not too, you know, I mean, it's down south of here anyway, right, on Buena Vista Boulevard, so.
Well, there, there may be a request for a fire station up there, that hasn't been finalized yet. But there's a, there is a need for a fire station that needs to be addressed, whether it's this one or the landowner of this piece is workable to put it somewhere else, will determine where it goes.
Brooke, so the, so the mixed-use, if we're talking forty-five feet, are we talking, so you're looking at like four-story type, type product?
Yes, sir.
And then the accessories would be three-story, looks like?
I'm just trying to picture what your sightline's going to look like along that ridge.
I'm just trying to picture what your sightline is going to look like along that ridge. Well, it's the highest elevated part in the whole project, and then you're going to have 50-foot building up there. That's going to be the one thing that you're going to see.
Do you know how far down it is from that ridge?
It's about 110, 115 feet lower than.
Lower than the top of the ridge, obviously, but that's what that's what you're you're taking out the view corridor to the ridge, I guess, is my point.
I don't believe so.
The ridge will still be visible. That's how I'm envisioning it. You look up and you it this is all below, right? Okay. That was Commissioner Hanson. All right, anything else? Brooke, thank you. Should we get the engineer up here for good measure? All right.
Get them both up here.
With that being said, we've opened and closed the public comment. Are there any other questions for staff commissioners before we vote on this item? I'll look for a motion on item five, 5C? 8C? There we go. 8C.
Are we going to have any more discussion on it or no?
We can definitely have more discussion if you'd like.
I personally feel that two two-hour planning sessions and then an hour and 15 minutes of a public or of a public meeting for something that's going to affect the city for 20 years is probably insufficient time, in my personal opinion. This is Commissioner Muso, by the way. And I have a real hard time sitting here tonight, knowing that I'm going to affect, you know, the terrain, the outlook of the city in one of its primary, probably one of its prettiest areas of the city, as Drew has stated previously. I'm personally not real comfortable with with some of the aspects of this. And you know, I just don't. I know that this has been in the works for a number of years. It's obvious because of the drawings that they have and and the overlays that they used. Brio wasn't even hardly built out yet. So, you know, their aerial shots were were a little older. So it's been in the works for a number of years, and I'm sure there's been hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on the developers' portion for the engineering and everything else. And that's not my concern. You know, that's part of the that's part of the game that everybody plays in building this stuff. My concern is, though, is that are we doing the right thing for the for the citizens of Washington County, or is there a better use for this particular property that hasn't been presented to us? And I haven't been on the planning commission long enough to know if there's ever been anything presented to us. But I doubt if there has been because the road wasn't, the parkway wasn't there until just recently. So those are my concerns. And, you know, and like I said, I just I'm really uncomfortable with some of the some of the things that are in the plan. And I'll leave it at that.
If I may just help you with that, Commissioner, I'll just give you a little history of a little bit of the 15 years I've been here. It's the first proposal we've had of anybody doing a zone change. Now, in my 15 years, I knew that there were two heavy hitters looking at this previous. And I don't mind sharing the one. Sun River looked at buying this piece, making it Sun River 2. And they were this close to pulling the trigger. You know what Sun River looks like. If I'm going to take a Sun River 2, it's going to be just like Sun River 1 versus what I see here. It's a hands down, no question for me. I'll take this project over a Sun River. Now, Sun River is a nice development. Don't get me wrong. I like Sun River. They've done some great things, but when I see what this proposes versus another Sun River, I would choose this, you know, every time. That's just my just to give you the history and, you know, they were the closest ones to pulling the trigger with Sun River. And but that's just to help you with that. But other than that, there's one other, you know, person looked at this, but there was going to be a hodgepodge more broken up into five separate. I don't even know if they were going to do a PCD, to be perfectly honest with you. I think it would have been five PUDs all separated different, which again, would have put that in third place for me, you know, out of the three that I do know of in in the 15 years I've been here, just for what that's worth for you. Because you did kind of ask that kind of question, what else has been proposed? So, yeah.
This is Sheil. I I personally like it. I like the vision that they have, and I think they have a good vision. I I think we have to have a developer do this that has the funds to take it all the way to the end, and they do. They have the money to do it. It's it's going to require a big deal to do this. It's going to take some time. But I think if they'll adhere to their design standards and and don't hodgepodge it, and they they stay fast and and sure on on their development, and they don't come in and make a lot of changes down the road, I I think I think it's a good it's a good fit for that property. We all want other retail. I don't know anybody here that doesn't want some real cool retail things. They're not going to come until we have population, and that's this is going to help.
That's what I was just going to say. We got to have the rooftops to get the commercial in. And this is going to bring our rooftops to help exit 13 and help.
And exit 13 is coming, exit 2 is coming, but they still need rooftops for them to be successful. So we need to provide some rooftops.
All right, Commissioners, anything else that you'd like to put on the record for comments? For me, I've no, I've lived in a community that was close to something similar to this, and I've seen the end result. And while there were some pains getting to the end result in that one, actually, I love it. And I think that this project is similar for my mind is that I'm looking forward to seeing the end the end of it. And I am glad we got rid of the golf course because that was that was a harder one for me to swallow at this time in our history with the city and water and things. So with that being said, if there isn't any other comments, I'll welcome them if you'd like to put them on the record. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion on this item.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I just, I guess I'll summarize my thoughts. I I had a lot of concerns initially during our our work meetings and even, you know, the start of the meeting. Some of those, some of those were the were the number of vacation rentals. I am I am glad that those were reduced. I think this is a more manageable number of that. It promotes the open space. I was concerned about the the water use and the and the cost to the city of another golf course, and so I'm glad that that's not there. I like that the the natural trail system is is emphasized as opposed to putting in a golf course. I still think that that we need to emphasize commercial, and I understand you have to have rooftops to get commercial, but you also have to have the commercial to sustain the rooftops. It's you got to build it hand in hand. But I think they've at least tried to address that with the additional mixed use. I like that the trailheads were enhanced as opposed to our first meeting when we first looked at it. And I like the the idea with with minimizing lighting as much as we can. And then, I mean, my my some of my big concerns, Brooke answered them with with regards to how the different lots are going to be built and and sold and so forth. And like Commissioner Hanson, I mean, I've so I've I've built in in projects very similar to this over the years, and I and I think this is a well-laid out plan. I think it it looks better than say if you had a whole bunch of different people coming in. If you had a bunch of different people, it would end up looking somewhat like the fields. You know, you'd have just a whole bunch of individual single-family, you know, chunks. Well, it'd look like the rest of Green Springs, exactly what it'd look like. You know, which, not saying that there's anything bad about that, but if you're trying to preserve the beauty of the area and have some diversity of of use, this does a better job than that than just having lots and lots of single-family homes as far as the eye can see. So again, I had, I did have a lot of reservations. I think Brooke did a good job at at answering most of my questions. So that's that's what I'll say.
All right. Anybody else?
This is Commissioner Bullock. I make a recommendation we approve our motion to approve Z 21 Z dash 21 dash 23 for the zone change request from Open Space to the proposed Green Springs Plan Community Development with the associated project plan, guidelines, and development agreement.
This is Sheil. I'd second that. Is was that stated correctly?
I think the only thing that maybe needs to be added, you might have said it, was the findings of the conditions that are in the staff report.
There there aren't any in this one, just because it's a P. That's why I just put he he stated all three we need to worry about, the project plan guidelines, development agreement. That's all that booklet that you see. That's what all that is. So you guys have looked through that.
I second that. Sheil.
I have a the motion on the table is okay. All right. I've got a motion by Commissioner Bullock. I have a second by Commissioner Sheil. Individual voting. Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheil.
Aye.
Commissioner Muso.
Nay.
I'm Commissioner Hanson. I'm an aye as well. The motion passes, and we will send that to city council with a recommendation for approval. Thanks to everybody, Commissioners, especially this evening, and staff, especially for putting this together for us this evening. And is there anything else that needs to be brought before the commission at this time?
Nothing else can be because it's not on your agenda, so.
No birthdays or anything like that? At this time, I'll look for a motion to close the meeting.
This is Sheil. I propose we close this planning commission meeting.
This is Anderson. I second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is officially closed. Thank you, everybody.